When you guys are ready, go ahead.
Okay, let's get this road on the show. Welcome to the January 7th, 2021. The Manistee Planning Commission, please rise to the pledge.
My pledge allegiance and flag. United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
Please take role.
Commissioner Samansky?
Nick's muted.
He's muted.
Present.
Commissioner Swansky?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Mr. Yoder?
Here.
Commissioner Mimberto? Chair Whitlam?
Here, thank you. We are going to omit the agenda. We are moving the Correspondence Section X into just before our public hearing. So with that said, approval of the agenda at this time, the Planning Commission can't take action to approve the January 7th, 2021 agenda.
I'll make that motion. Shemansky?
Second it.
Second it.
Second by Roger, discussion. None, please take role.
Commissioner Swansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto? Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yeah.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Thank you. At this time, the Planning Commission can't approve the December 30, 2020 minutes. Is there a minute?
I'll make the motion approved.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
All right, Pam.
Ellie.
Uh, any discussion? None, please take your role.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Samansky?
Yes.
Mr. Mimberto?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence.
All right, guys, we have quite a bit of correspondence. Me and Zach are going to alternate between correspondence and if you guys can save your questions to the end, we're getting a little bit of feedback from one of the mics. I think I'm going to mute it up, but if you do have a question, you know, feel free to interrupt me, but please try to save it to the end. I'm going to mute Roger up because I think the feedback's coming a little off you, Roger. If you if you want to get my attention, just wave and I'll stop and I'll grab you. All right, so I will go first. So the first correspondence we have is from Mary Ann Shin. Came in on Tuesday, January 5th. It's an email response, 1721 Planning Commission meeting special use for the marijuana grow and processing facility. It reads, hi, Ms. Baker, here is a letter I submitted for the News Advocate today. Thank you for helping me get it to the members of the Planning Commission regarding special use permit for marijuana grow and process and facility at 170 Glatcheski Drive. Today, while reading an article about Thursday's public hearing regarding a new marijuana grow and processing facility proposed for 170 Glatcheski Drive, I was struck by the Conor's developers' developers' comment that the facility will work to minimize light and noise pollution and will use carbon filtration to mitigate potential odors. To me, that sentence lies at the crux of the matter. The words or the use of the words minimize and mitigate are red flags. Minimize means to reduce and mitigate means to make less severe, serious, or painful. Online dictionary definition. That means that the developer is acknowledging that noise, light, and odors will be present and only the degree of which of each is in question. The area in which this facility would be placed is adjacent to residential areas. There are homes along the lake shore merely separated by a berm, but certain to be affected by light, noise, and air pollution. Already existing in the same area are cottages and condos in Harbor Village. The proposed site also is near the new senior center at the former St. Mary's Church, which is the focus of so much of your work and planning by the community members. In addition, there are plans for senior housing in that area, which certainly would be impacted. Our beautiful Fifth Avenue Beach and Lighthouse area would be far less attractive if light, air, and noise pollution are allowed to further encroach on the area. I would direct your attention to the editorial originally published by the Chicago Tribune and posted by the Tribune News Services on January 6th, 2019, and then reprinted as a guest view in the Manistee News Advocate. It is headed deodorizing marijuana may become a necessity. One section of the article reads, you could, for example, live next door to a processing operation or cannabis farm. To hear these neighbors tell, the airborne aroma is sometimes enough to gag a buzzard. It's as if the skunk or multiple skunks were living under our house, Gracie Guthrie, who lives near Sebastopol, California, told the New York Times, it's beyond anything you can imagine. She and her husband sometimes use respirators in self-defense. Roger Birch Birch of Shenney, Washington managed to get his property assessment reduced because of the pretty intense skunk smell from neighboring fields of pot. Landowners in Pueblo County, Colorado unsuccessfully sued the marijuana growing operation over odors that an expert witness likened to the stench of a landfill. Here in Manistee, we already have industrial odors and who's resulting from pumpers and the Aztec sour grass gla- excuse me, gas treatment plant that sits at the north end of Washington Street, which is near this proposed marijuana facility. And did indeed even those of us who live on the other side of the river sometimes experience odors that we think the winds may carry from that location. So there you have it. There is much to be protected here, including our already existing tax base and our growth potential as a resort community, which relies heavily on the beach areas. I fervently urge the Manistee County Planning Commission to reject the application for special use permit from the proposed marijuana grow and processing facility by Victorian Reserves LLC of Grand Rapids. I urge others to express their objections as well prior to and during the Planning Commission virtual meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday, January 7th. Mary Ann Linky Shin, Manistee and Hazlet, Michigan. She gives her contact information, which I will not share. And my local, a note, my local address is 585 Broad Avenue, my family home since 1957. And my husband and I also own the conduit 2047 Lock Dumont in Hazlet, Michigan. My father, Wayne Linky, was a council or city councilman and mayor. So I fully appreciate the time and work that goes into your commitment you have made to our city and its citizens. You have my sincere gratitude.
So the next letter is from Scott Dings with Barnes and Thornburg LLP. This is directed to George Saylor for the rest of the commission. Says, Dear George, we are the attorneys for a group of community members who have asked us to write on their behalf. Purpose of this letter is to object formally to the proposed special land use permit sought by Victorian Reserves LLC, the applicant, to operate marijuana grow and processing facility at 170 Glatcheski Drive, the site. We ask the application be denied as set forth below. Table this matter. First, this matter be tabled until your February meeting so that we have more time to react to the proposal. Even though the public notice stated that the application materials were available on the city's website, the packet was not available until December 30, 2020, which was nine days ago. So we did not have the time. So we did not have the application and related materials until just nine days ago, even though the notice stated the materials were available upon request. Both the city's ordinance and the zoning enabling act requires 15 days' notice before a public hearing, but here the packet references in the notice was not available for 15 days. Further, the holiday season and the pandemic made it difficult to review these materials quickly. Lastly, the size of this project merits the public engagement and robust public comment. References made to the applicant's narrative to public outreach. Our clients have not been contacted by the applicant. That should occur before the public hearing so that the so that the public understands the project and the applicants can address the public concerns. In any event, the Planning Commission should not conclude with this engagement, should not conclude that this engagement has occurred based upon the representation by this applicant. It has not. Staff recommendations. We agree with the conditions recommended by city staff in the memorandum dated December 29, 2020. In the event the permit is granted. However, we ask that those recommendations be expanded to set forth herein to include greater detail and additional conditions. Incomplete application. The site plan must comply with section 2203E, which identifies the contents of of an application for special land use permit. Those included, those include a light plan which have not been submitted. The city lacks authority to proceed on the application until it is complete. See section 2204A, which requires an incomplete application be returned to the applicant. The application to the city's, the application on the city's website is missing pages two and three. So to date, these have not been made public. This is likely an oversight, but its effect is to deny proper review to the public. Phasing. The applicant seeks approval now for the entirety of the massive project described in the narrative portion of this application. The application seeks approval of three phases, four new buildings, each proposed to be 10,000 square feet in renovation of an existing building, 5,750 feet. Construction to begin in 2021 with final phase built in 2023. We object to this general approval. Rather, the phases should each be considered on their own merit as the application is ready to proceed with each. The public should not, the public should be given an opportunity to comment before each phase is considered. The city should be able to consider whether the applicant is worthy of further approvals based upon how the earlier phases has performed. The application in your consideration should be limited to Phase 1 only, which is renovation of the existing building and construction of one 10,000 square foot building. Odor, noise, and screening. It is undisputed that grow facilities emit odor. This proposed facility is not different. The application pledges to mitigate odor, but not to eliminate odor mitigation to other properties. The city should regulate this type of air filtration system needed for this type of user and should also prohibit mitigation of any odor from this site. We suggest the city require the applicant to present its plan to contain odor so that it can be reviewed before any decision by the city. The mitigation of smells from the site would be devastating to the city and nearby landowners and must be addressed as part of the process, not after approval. The HVAC systems are noisy. It is expected that numerous units will be needed to comply with city regulations. As such, increased noise is a concern too. The units should be properly screened or enclosed so as to eliminate noise from migrating from the sites to the nearby properties. Safety. A detailed safety plan should be required by the city so that you're able to review how the applicant proposes to address the possibility of crime on the site and how they may impact nearby properties. Environmental impacts in utilities. The potential for damage to the city's sanitary sewer system from this user is significant. During the cultivation progress, process, waste is generated that can cause backups and lead to premature line and equipment failure. The method and degree to which the system will be used should be analyzed now. Grow facilities are a voracious use of electricity. Will this site create capacity and shortage issues? What electricity is available to the site and what is needed? These questions should be answered formally now. Conclusion. We'd like to have enough time to conduct a meaningful review of the application. As such, we ask that you table this matter until your February meeting. If you choose to proceed now, the application should be denied because the application is not complete and because the impact this you this use will have on nearby properties. Kindly make this letter part of the proceedings at the Planning Commission regarding this matter. Best regards, Scott Dings.
This one's January 7th, 2021. Dear Commissioners, thank you for your opportunity to address the special use permit application for the proposed marijuana grow and process and facility at 170 Glatcheski Drive and associated parcels. As described, the project is a compound of numerous buildings totaling approximately 50,000 square feet to be built in phases spanning many years on multiple land parcels that comprise nearly four acres. The site is situated very near Duffy Park, which is a community playground and athletic fields used by local children and organized youth sports leagues. Further, there are homes, public beaches, and fishing lake, future senior housing, and service center, dentist's office, mental health facility, and other businesses in close proximity to the proposed site. Future sites of operation of other marijuana facilities may affect a wider area of the city. Therefore, the decision on this particular SUP sets a course for the whole city. If the city wishes to operate. If the city. Was there a question? I'm sorry. No?
No, there wasn't.
I'm sorry, hold on. Future sites of this operation of other marijuana's may affect wider areas of the city. Therefore, the decision of this particular SUP sets a course for the whole city. If the city wishes to operate in the best interests of its residents, visitors, and workers, it should define and enforce objective measures of compliance by marijuana facilities, especially grow and processing facilities, and establish clear remediation, remediation, I'm sorry, requirements should violations occur. The complexity of the proposed project demands further scrutiny to project or protect community stakeholders. Concerns for negative community impacts include odor. During the flowering cycle of the plant last six weeks prior to harvest, there is an intense odor emitted from the plant. Even with carbon filter exhaust, it smells bad. What is the metric penalty and remediation to protect the community? Sealed indoor cannabis cultivation facilities preventing outdoor from escaping the premise require appropriate engineering of negative air pressure and carbon filtration. To be effective at removing odor, carbon filters need to be changed frequently. There is other technology included fog systems that can distribute, contribute to neutralizing cannabis odor. System specifications that will eliminate marijuana odor should be submitted as part of the SUP. Who on the Planning Commission has the expertise for the marijuana matters and can render an assessment? What local health and billing departments review proposed billing plans and inspect prior to marijuana enterprises opening and who will who will ongoing operations? Zero tolerance for odor should be a should be the community standard. Objective measures and compliance related to odor should be condition of any special use permit. Technology such as the nasal ranger affectometer is available as a tool to establish metrics and accountability. Landscape lighting plan and noise. Please make it a condition of the SUP to ensure residential park areas, including man-made lake and beach areas, do not have facility in sightline, do not have the facility in sightlines. Other communities require that the facility must be constructed in such a manner that the marijuana grow and processing facilities cannot be seen by the public from the public right away. Marijuana grow and processors facilities shall be conducted in a manner that does not constitute a public nuisance. A public nuisance may be deemed to exist if marijuana growing or processing facilities produce light, glare, heat, noise, odor, or vibration that is detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or interferes with the enjoyment of life and property. Please obligate a robust landscaping plan and its ongoing help to any approved SUP. The final lighting plan was not available for review. Need technical opinion on the light type selected as an impact on the neighbors and compliance with light ordinance. Please ensure the lighting will not have a negative impact on residential and vacation properties by making a condition of the SUP. This is congruent with the initial or in the intentional set forth in the applicant's letter stating his desire to mitigate light and noise while exceeding standards and expectations. Safety and security. At any time while the operation, the building will have hundreds, if not millions of dollars of product in the building. Criminals have broken into grow facilities and robbed them of their product, and extreme cases, people were killed. There should be a comprehensive safety, security plan that should be developed, detailed, and binding as part of the SUP approval. This will include employee parking in secured areas, transportation planning per the state requirement, security cameras, and fencing. Specific use of the space. Is is it a landlord who leases or to tenants? Or is the owner operating the grow and processing facilities? Either way, growing is inherently different than processing. The site plan submitted does not indicate what activities growing or processing are occurring in the various building. Processing various buildings. Processing includes extraction. There are three primary types of extraction, one of which is highly combustible. There was a facility in southeast Michigan that exploded in the last year. All areas of the process should be defined as part of the SUP review and approval. Lack of clarity regarding the owner operation versus tenants should come down to policing the process and requirements set in place by the municipality. Tenants come and go, and after the first year, they become loose on their state municipal operating requirements as state and local inspection. Expertise is scarce, is a scarce resource. How to hold parties accountable? What happens when there is a change of ownership and or tenant? Given that the marijuana is not legal at a federal level, it can be difficult for marijuana businesses to obtain insurance. What insurance and or bond requirements are required should a catastrophic incident occur, causing harm to nearby properties? Hours of operation. Limit to reasonable times so as to not impact residents, properties, 8 to 5:00 PM. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our community's concerns. Ultimately, these concerns will reflect our care for and desire to protect what is cherished about and wonderful about the city. We believe that the Planning Commission has an opportunity and a duty to protect the best interest of the city's people and its visitors by setting a proper precedent in permitting this process. Respectfully, the Byrd family, 314 Dude's Drive. Dahlstrom family, 324 Dunes Drive. Phillips family, 294 Dunes Drive. Joyce family, 304 Dunes Drive. Matthews family, 318 Dunes Drive. Nicholas family, 332 Dunes Drive. Nowland family, 322 Dunes Drive. Palmer family, 322 Dunes Drive. The Ron family, 288 Dunes Drive. Rubek family, 326 Dunes Drive. And parcel 5151, 14501800. The Vanderloon family, 316 Dunes Drive. I apologize if I messed up any of those names. It was also sent out to each of the commissioners on this board, the city manager as well.
Was there a question?
Is that, is that the reading? Is that the call?
No, we still have. I still have five more.
Okay. All right.
And he has four, so we're going to be here.
So this letter is from Doug Parks regarding the River Street Water Street PUD project. First, I must disclose that I am a member of the City of Manistee Housing Commission Board. As a board, we have not discussed this project, nor to my knowledge has a position been taken. Secondly, I do not oppose the concept of this project and believe if properly approved, developed, maintained, managed, et cetera, it will be an asset. However, after receiving a letter from the Planning Department regarding this project due to owning nearby 445 River Street and 471 Water Street property, I researched the information that has been included with the city council's agenda for 1521 meeting in the Planning Commission agenda for 1721 meeting. I note several discrepancies and have several questions that do not appear to be addressed. City Council Packet. Section 8, Part B talks about the pilot, which seems fine in the fact that there will be 49 units, 25 workforce-related, and 24 reserved for seniors 55 plus. Application states that targeted demographics are seniors and facilities with targeted with income targeted at 30% to 80% of the median income. Executive summary states that the senior center is adjacent to the project. In fact, the senior center moved to their new location approximately two weeks ago. Planning Commission Packet. Cover letter states that they will have 49 senior rental units. Market is for 55 older, up to 60% of median income. Discrepancies. Are the units going to be part, are the units going to be a mix of senior and family housing or all senior housing? Are the targeted tenants going to be at 30% to 80% of median income? Or up to 60% of median income? Senior center has moved. Question. If 25 of the units are designated as being for workforce families, what are the occupancy guidelines? I know HUD will allow one or two adults plus a child up to one year of age in one bedroom. A request can be made for additional occupants to ensure that a household in need of housing is provided housing. Also, a live-in aid is not counted toward occupancy. For a two-bedroom, the occupancy requirements are the same, plus two children of the opposite sex can occupy the same second bedroom up to the age of five. And two children of the same sex can be in occupancy of the same bedroom until they leave the household. Thus, depending on the breakdown of the units designated for families and their actual occupancy level, there could be upwards of 30 or more children living in these units. Realistically, there would probably be fewer, but 10 to 20 is probably not out of the question. My major concern is a nearby property owner with some open space behind my building is where our is where are any of the children living in the development going to play? I've not seen any accommodations for a playground, a fenced play area, or an outdoor gathering area. This is still a commercial area of the city. There is a lot of traffic running down River Street and returning along Water Street or Pine Street to First Street. There are businesses located to the west and to the north of the project that receive multiple deliveries per week via truck. The Manistee River Channel, the City Marina, the former Chippewa Hotel property, and several private parking areas are all located nearby and could be an attractive nuisance to children of various ages. The lack of adequate planned outdoor play gathering areas will undoubtedly push many of these children to seek play elsewhere, be it private property or public streets. Everyone needs a place to live. I am not asking that this project be rejected. What I'm asking is that adequate space utilization is designed into the project to accommodate for all the targeted residents in their family. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thanks, Doug Parks.
One's title dated January 3rd, 2021. Mr. Scolin, Mr. Taylor, and City Council members, before you allow a 108-room motel to be built at First Street Beach, the citizens of Manistee need your assurance that any zoning change to permit the construction requires a sewer system upgrade downstream from the motel site that will be, one, be paid for by the motel's owners, and, two, have sufficient increased capacity to meet the motel's sewage removal needs while also continuing to meet the sewage removal needs of other properties. City representatives have said that Manistee's current sewer system capacity to handle the sewage and storm runoff is sufficient to handle all rains up to and included a once-in-20-year storm. The problem is, it isn't unusual for us to experience worse storms than that. Consequences, consequence. I'm sorry, consequentially. It is, it isn't unusual for sewage backups and other flooding to occur. Between 2008 and 2019, we had at least three storms that caused sewage backups and other water damage in homes and businesses. On June 2nd or June 12th and 13th, 2008, Manistee saw major flooding caused by six to eight inches eight inches of rain that fell in just a few hours during the quote-unquote "storm of the century." On May 11th, 2011, rainfall described as a 100-year rain event occurred. In 2014, the city paid $106,335 in compensation to three families and two businesses for damages to other properties caused by sewer backups and flooded basements during the 2011 storm. Additional homes and businesses also suffered sewer backups and flooded basins. On July 20th, 2019, a heavy rainstorm totaling over five inches of precipitation caused many sewer backups and flooded basements in the city of Manistee. It seems unlikely that Manistee's current sewer system will be able to handle the addition of a new motel without backups increasing in frequency and volume. It appears that in the future, it will be necessary to limit the motel's occupancy rate to less than 100% or to expect the citizens and businesses of Manistee to experience more sewage backups into their properties. Neither of these options is reasonable. Requiring the citizens of Manistee to pay for a sewer system upgrade that is required for construction of a for-profit company's motel is not reasonable. Please make a sewer system capacity upgrade at any bottlenecks between the motel and the sewage treatment plant, a condition of any construction permissions in the First Street Beach area, and please make the cost of such upgrades the responsibility of the motel owner. Sincerely, Sandra Kreitschmar and Richard Blue, 130 Lighthouse Way, North Manistee, Michigan, 49660. It was also CC'd to Jeff McCula, the utility and DPW director.
This one is from Peter Breck Beverage. Dear Mr. Scolin, I am writing this letter to formally object to any rezoning, any rezoning requests on the property located at 101 South Lake Shore Drive. That location currently resides in a district zoned as R1 Residential. And any consideration for a new building or renovations, renovations, renovations should be compatible with the R1 classification and with the adjacent land use and natural environment. The zoning should be maintained R1 at R1 with all the requirements, restrictions, and prescribed usages. This is also especially important, given the close proximity to Lake Michigan, surrounding parks, beach, dunes, and nature areas. Generally, a structure of, a structure of the size described, that being a five-story, 108-unit situated right hotel situated. hotel situated right at First Street Beach, a site long populated by one-to-one and one-and-a-half-story beach motel is way too large and out of character for the location, as well as too dense with a probable traffic flow issues, congestion, access to the public beach and parks, as well as excess lighting and parking issues. Please see my letter to the editor of the Manistee Advocate attached below. Specifically in reference to the City of Manistee zoning ordinance, Article eight clearly states below is a general point in section eight hundred, purpose and intent, the following. Article eight, R one, low-density district, section eight hundred, proposed an intent, purpose and intent. It is the intent of the district to establish and protect residential areas consisting primarily of low-density, single-family neighborhoods designed and maintained, promote an attractive, healthy, and stable living environment for families, singles, and the elderly. In portions of the district near Lake Michigan, this district is intended to protect the Lake Michigan shoreline environment while enabling sustainable enjoyment of unique, of the unique feature of this community. The inclusion of a five-story, one hundred and eight motel, one hundred and eight-unit motel at this site clearly is inconsistent with the state above-stated objectives. Section eight hundred clearly enumerates a number of requirements and restrictions, which include one, maximum building height of two and a half stories or thirty-five feet, not five stories. Maximum lot coverage is limited to forty percent. Again, a five-story, one hundred and eight-unit hotel is not compatible with these requirements and restrictions. Section eight oh three further elaborates that these requirements listed, listed below. Section eight oh three, dimensional standards. With the R one district, the following dimensional standard shall apply. Seven, lot coverage. Not more than forty percent of the parcel area shall be covered by buildings. Eight, height. The maximum height of principal buildings in the R one district shall be the, shall be the lesser of thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. Maximum height of accessory buildings shall exceed eight, shall be eighteen feet with sidewalls not exceeded twelve feet in height. The current motel has been at the location for many years, and I'm not sure if I, if, if it required zoning variances at the time it was built. In the event it received a variance for a non-conforming purpose and or intent, then presumably Article four, section four hundred of the City of Manistee zoning ordinance would apply to limit any change of its footprint. Article four, section four hundred, purpose and intent. Non-conforming lots, structures, and uses as defined herein, which were lawful before this ordinance was adopted, may continue until they are discontinued, damaged, or removed, but shall not be encouraged to continue or be duplicated after a period of non-use. These non-conformities are declared by this ordinance in the, to be incompatible with the buildings and structures and uses of the parcels, lots, buildings, and structures permitted by this ordinance. It is further the intent of this ordinance that such non-conformities shall be, shall not be enlarged, expanded, or extended, except is provided herein, nor shall such non-conformities be used as grounds for adding or other buildings and structures and uses of parcels, lots, buildings, and structures prohibited elsewhere in the same land use district. I greatly, I greatly appreciate your consideration and review of my concerns and comments. Thank you, Peter Bre- Peter Bre- Beverage. C C to Taylor, Roger Zelinski, Dave Bachman, Nancy Baker.
All right. This one came in on the fourth of January, two thousand and twenty-one. Manistee is blessed with great waterfront parks and beaches, but the proposed Hampton development is not a suitable project for this area. The scope and size is not compatible with the natural surroundings of the park and would change forever the footprint of this area. We have misgivings about the safety of residents who frequent this recreational space. Increased traffic would make it more dangerous for walkers, joggers, and bicycle riders. The parking situation on the development site would be horrendous and not a win-win, as some suggest. Light pollution would change the whole ambience of the waterfront. Safety concerns are raised by the proximity to Rocket Park and Rotary Park. Other recreational areas such as the tennis courts, dog park, ball fields, and concerts would be negatively be impacted by this project. For all these reasons, we are formally requesting the Manistee Planning Commission keep this R one zoning for one oh one South Lake Shore and look for a more appropriate site in the business district for this development. We have a great natural recreation area. Let's keep it. Thank you, Bill and Judy O'Yet. One twenty Lighthouse Way, Manistee, Michigan. C C, Manistee City Council and the Manistee Planning Commission.
This is from Patrick Batka to all members of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to let each of you know that I am totally opposed to the horrendous possibilities of a new hotel being constructed at First Street Beach. First Street Beach slash Douglas Park has evolved over the years into possibly Manistee's greatest attraction for citizens and visitors alike. A beautiful place with something for everyone. Why mess it up with something that, at least in my mind, just would not fit in the general scheme of things at the beach? If the city had the money, I would love to see the city purchase the present structure on the site in question and tear it down. That land should be part of the beach property. We have already lost so many things in the city, why lose another? Once it is gone, it was, it will always be gone. First Street Beach and Douglas Park is a precious commodity. Let's hang on to it. I, I urge each of you to please do what you can to quash this idea of this whole new hotel. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, Patrick Batka.
January fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, Manistee City Council and Planning Commission. This is a reply to Lake Shore Motel slash Hampton Inn and Suites Development. Thank you for taking the time to read my statement. Please think of the residents and business owners currently supporting the Manistee County area. Unfortunately, I missed presentations about the development. I've read some articles and heard from others about the project. My concerns. Number one, decreasing revenue. The hotel will supposedly bring in four million dollars into the area. How much of that four million will be cannibalized from area hotels? It's been a constant struggle to cash flow, upgrade, and make a living in Manistee County. For example, in two thousand and seven, the little, the L R C R opened up an additional hundred rooms. The impact on the Days Inn was a revenue decrease of two hundred thousand dollars. Now, after years of continual upgrades, Wyman Hotel Group's support and C V B area promotion, the hotel has gained back the loss, only to have it lost again due to COVID. I have been a C V B board member since two thousand and six. I was instrumental in getting the lodging tax, tax increase from two to five percent. The goal was to increase exposure and terrorism by partnering with Pure Michigan. I wanted Manistee tourist traffic to grow and fund our business. I've been in favor of strategic growth since I moved here. Industries bring larger wages and without the dramatic drop in demand and revenue. The hotel consistently battles to stay afloat during the six to seven slow months. I'm a member of the D D A Board of Filer Township. The Bob Gibbs study from two thousand and nineteen stated seven hundred-plus rooms are within ten minutes of Filer Township. The staffing of these eight hotels encompasses only two-point-eight percent of the area workforce. Page thirty-four. For your information, the study found there wasn't a need for additional hotels. Two years later, two hundred rooms are proposed for the area without significant increase in industry. Number two, scale. Does the size of the hotel fit the property? Is it overbuilt for a two-acre parcel? A one, a one-of-a-kind parcel. It will represent the area for the next sixty to a hundred years. The rendering show hotel ready to be built in a large city or on eastern shoreline of the United States, North and South Carolina or Florida. Number three, parking. A, is two acres large enough for a hundred and eight rooms, a restaurant, bar, and two pools? Will the guest employees, local visiting, locals visiting the bar and restaurants find parking? My parking for ninety-four rooms covers a large portion of Days Inn's property. Two acres isn't enough. Attached to the listing of a seventy-two-unit hotel, or seventy-two-unit Hampton Inn for sale on two-point-three-seven acres. If two-point-three-seven acres allows for a seventy-two-unit hotel, how will a hundred and eight units fit on two acres? B, Suburbans Inn's will pave over city land rent-free. No purchase or of additional land, no lease payment, no tax collection. Please set aside an area for Days Inn parking at the beach. My guests would love the twenty-five to forty spaces readily available. I'll take the deal. When are you available? Over the last fifteen years, Douglas Park, First Street Beach, has been transformed to a beautiful beach area for the community to use. The tourist season in Manistee is extremely short and depends greatly on its beaches and waterfront. The Hampton Inn peak season is the same as ours, June to October. During these months, the other thirty-two Manistee County properties, vacation rentals, residents, and daily visitors need the public parking for our guests. Our hotels have enough parking to accommodate our guests. The Hampton Inn should, as well. You cannot allow a private business to infringe, encroach, or interfere with revenue-generating activities from Manistee County. B, the parking won't be a problem because our guests will check in at four P M. and check out at five A M. I could see this scenario at a big airport hotel. Very, very incorrect. I'm very surprised this is actually said. How misleading. I know Manistee is small, but we're not naive. This certainly won't be the case at this destination property. Guests will stay for multiple nights, use amenities, and not move their vehicles much. For your information, my guests want to check in early and leave between nine and eleven A M. C, an article mentioned the hotel would allow beachgoers to happily use their lot. This won't last. The negative guest reviews will change this. Guests will complain for the amount of money I paid. I couldn't find parking. The hotel parking was always full with non-paying guests. Since the Hampton Inn won't mind others using their parking, should I have Days Inn guests use the twenty-five to forty, uh, rent-free spots? D, the new hotel has a dog park, or do they, or is it an amenity nearby? E, does the fire department have a large enough equipment to battle a fire? Will they have enough property to battle the fire? Lastly, a business should be able to conduct business within its property lines. If not, the business should reevaluate and scale back if necessary. Why is a proposed business success hotel number twenty-three more important than the current businesses or those currently living and supporting the Manistee community? Will the business negatively impact your income, lifestyle, or way of life? How many of you who are making this decision have invested twenty-five minute, or two-point-five million to three-point-five million within Manistee County and will continue? Our family currently resides and invested everything in Manistee County. I've spent fifteen years improving the Days Inn, seasonally employing sixteen to thirty-eight people, raising a family, and made many great friends in Manistee. I would like to continue to support our community. Thank you. Todd Nguyen House, G M slash owner, Manistee, our Days Inn of Manistee.
January sixth, from Kathy Butler to Manistee's City Planning Commission. I want to ask no plea that you not allow the proposed Hampton Inn to be built at First Street Beach. It would feel like a big part of the heart and soul of Manistee would be severely damaged. Our beaches and lakeshore are priceless assets to Manistee. And I, I and many others have chosen to live here in Manistee because of its natural beauty. I walk the area frequently, and I do not want to see a five-story beach resort that does not fit the character of this beach area. This is not a win-win. It would be a travesty to sell out our amazing beachfront area to commercialism. A five-story building is not going to be hidden in by trees. The busyness of this, of this dominating building would profoundly detract from the beachfront. I'm not opposed to Manistee's economic growth and prosperity. My husband and I celebrate, celebrate such improvements as the newly repurposed and remodeled former Glick's Building for college and business use in the refurbish, in the refurbishing of the Boathouse Grill for a new restaurant. There's a new one hundred-room hotel planned on River Street, so we do not need a one hundred-plus-room hotel on First Street Beach. Yes, Lake Shore Motel has been at the beach for a long time, but its presence has been quiet and unobtrusive. Since it was grandfathered into the park area, perhaps funding could be found to turn that property into an open park space. Healthy growth for Manistee is good, but not at the expense of our treasured and irreplaceable beach and waterfront areas. Manistee needs to protect and preserve its natural areas and assets for residents and tourists alike. Thank you for your attention. Please forward this email to others that are involved in this decision. Kathy Butler, Manistee. P S, I sent this letter to the rest of the planning commission, but didn't have the contact, contact info for you two, and one had to be, and one had misspelled.
January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, Manistee City Planning County Mission, Commission in reply to the Hampton Inn development at one oh one South Lake Shore Drive. I wish to have the following items added to the January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission meeting agenda. This is in addition to the email letter I sent December twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Does the R one district, number one, does the R one district allow for a commercial venture of the construction and development of a five-story commercial establishment? Number two, are there deed restrictions related to the public use of the property in the First Street area after trust fund money and grants were used for the First Street improvements? Is there, is any of the surrounding city property going to be used to assist with zoning requirements? Three, what protections are granted to the beach property by city charter? Would the use of any of the, of any of, any of this property for commercial enterprise require a vote of the citizens? Thank you, Donna Bowing, eight oh seven Denton Street, Manistee, Michigan. Uh, C C, Thad Taylor, the City Council Planning Commission, um, and then the members are listed. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, public hearing, or excuse me, uh, public hearing, I'm sorry. The Livery and Dairy Senior Housing P U D.
Um, one second. Is it the three of you, Kendra?
Okay. Yes, I think Kitty is gonna lead off here.
Okay. Well, then, uh, Mark, did you open the public hearing?
Uh, yeah.
So, do we talk during the public hearing, or do we talk when it, on the agenda item? Confused, sorry.
So, uh, with the public hearing, uh, Mark can open it. You guys give your presentation. And then, uh, they will discuss it further. And they will close the public meeting, but no decision is made during the public meeting. And then, uh, public comment on the agenda-related items, and it's continued until new business where a decision can be made at that time, or it can be tabled for later, or it can be denied. Or some other aspect or option, so.
Is this where you wanna see our?
Your presentation, yes. Do you need co-host?
Yes, yes. Right now, he'll run the present, he'll run the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Now, you should be able to share your screen now.
Um, while Al is getting his screen going, I will, um, take a moment and start with some very introductory information. Uh, again, my name is Kitty Tynestra. I am the Executive Director with the Oceana County Housing Commission Nonprofit Corporation. Uh, we are a local nonprofit that has been serving West Michigan region, meeting and expanding housing opportunities for residents in the area for, for many, many years now. And so we've been excited to, um, come and speak again with the Planning Commission members, and we thank you for your time tonight. As many of you hopefully recall, you're here in, uh, December at your last meeting to informally present, um, on this project, and so we wanted to come and, um, speak in more detail and provide a little bit more of a, a refresh on some of the details of this project. I also wanted to take a moment and, um, clarify a couple of pieces before we get into the site plan piece, because we know that, that some questions have been raised, and we'd like to address some of those. So thank you again for your time. So we are working on, um, the river water development, will compose, uh, will be comprised of forty-nine units that are one and two-bedroom units, uh, located at at building we're calling the Livery, um, and at four fifty-one and four fifty-three River Street, which we're calling the Dairy. Um, and we're using those names because they reflect the historic uses, um, of those properties around, uh, the turn of the century. So, um, since we came in December, or when we originally came in December and presented of, about our proposal to the Planning Commission, at that time, we were anticipating our target population being, uh, solely seniors, age fifty-five and over. Since that time, we have provided presentations to the City Council, as well as the D D A, um, and we've received feedback from, uh, council members, D D A members, and, uh, the public uh, in terms of need for, uh, workforce housing as well. So we have since expanded our target population to include, um, workforce housing. So of those forty-nine units, twenty-five will be targeted towards workforce, and twenty-four will be targeted towards seniors fifty-five and older. So to speak to the workforce piece, essentially- Um, so to speak to the workforce piece, essentially, um, anyone who, who um, meets the eligibility to reside in the units can qualify under workforce housing, so they're not specifically family. Um, they could be empty nesters, they could be households with children, they could be single individuals, they could be um, young professionals in a roommate situation, any household composition, um, that makes sense, um, is appropriate for that. Um, I do want to also let everyone know that while this housing is attainable um, and considered affordable, it is not subsidized. So, um, there's a lot, there can be a lot of confusion, uh, between subsidized housing and affordable housing. And, um, oftentimes when people hear affordable, they think of subsidized, they think of section eight, they think of housing with a voucher. Um, in, in, in the housing world, which, in which I live, um, all subsidized housing is considered affordable housing, but not all affordable housing is subsidized. And that's what the river water, um, apartments are. They're affordable, but without a subsidy. Um, so there are no, no section eight vouchers, no HUD vouchers, um, to the residents there. There are, um, income limits, um, in order for residents to qualify, um, for a household of four, that's over fifty-one thousand a year. Um, on down to a single person, the income limit would be just under thirty-six thousand dollars a year, which would equate to a full-time wage of over seventeen dollars an hour. Um, so it's, it's, can impact a substantial portion of the residents within Manistee County, um, would be able to meet those income, those income, um, guidelines. Um, our max rents, um, you know, we have a rent range based on, on income ranges. Uh, but the max rents actually mirror very closely what some of the market rate rents are, um, as well. So, so there's quite a, quite a range. What I want to speak to and refresh on for a moment, um, is speaking to uh, the city of Manistee's master plan. So within your master plan, um, you have identified some specific housing goals that we believe that we have worked very hard to align this project with, so that we can come alongside the goals of the city of the ma- of Manistee, um, to further expand housing opportunities for residents. In particular, um, your master plan states a goal for consideration of senior housing within the city. Um, and that would set aside space specifically for senior housing, which this would do. Additionally, within the master plan, um, it cites within the C three business dis- central business district um, an encouraged use of mixed-use space. So, uh, specifically providing for residential opportunities within the downtown district will only increase the vibrancy of the downtown. Um, and that encompasses that mixture of retail, service, entertainment, and residential uses. So again, um, our building on River Street is in the downtown district, and it will mirror that um, residential flavor that's already on that downtown with three units, um, on the second floor. Commercial space similar to the other commercial spaces on the first floor. Additionally, um, the river water development is actually on two redevelopment-ready sites um, that were identified through joint collaboration between, uh, the city of Manistee and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And so of those, of the redevelopment-ready sites that, um, have been identified and designated through this process, um, we're, we would be utilizing two. There are three other sites, redevelopment-ready sites within one mile, um, of our location. And so by developing on those two redevelopment-ready sites, it's really going to enhance the marketability um, of those, of the additional sites. And, and, and really, I would like to just say that just like other communities similar to Manistee such as Frankfurt and South Haven, um, and, and others, which have and are currently doing infusing workforce housing and attainable housing within the downtown area. Um, it's really important to community vitality. So with that being said, um, now, now that we've kind of talked a little bit about uh, the population that we're intending to serve, now we're gonna get into the nuts and bolts of the site plan and what we're really proposing to, to build. Um, and I'm gonna take a moment and introduce my two team members that are joining us on the call. Uh, many of you are familiar with Kendra Thompson. She is, um, the architect for this project. She's worked with us on a number of our other housing developments that we have done in the area and has done a fantastic, beautiful job. Um, and many of you are familiar with her work, um, with the former Glick's Building. And, um, Al Martin is also our development specialist, who, uh, he's manning the PowerPoint. So, um, we may jump in back and forth, um, to answer questions and, and share information. So we thank you for your patience if we have any technical difficulties with that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kendra, and she will speak in more detail about our site plan.
Thanks Kitty. So, um, this is, uh, Kitty mentioned, I have been working with her group on other projects, and, um, their organization is a nonprofit organization. Their focus is on, um, addressing, um, community housing needs. And definitely in the city of Manistee and the greater Manistee area of, uh, housing and workforce housing and senior housing are top of the list if you, uh, were to ask anyone. So, um, our response and her organization's response to this is, is, you know, a response to identified community needs. Um, uh, and as a, a person that's lived most of my life in the community of Manistee, I would not be part of a project that I did not fully think is appropriate, appropriately um, located and the right use at the right location in our community, so. Um, uh, hence, I'm a believer that this is the right solution for us here. So, um, what you have in front of you is just an overall Google map to give a little bit of context. Um, Al, I don't know if you have your cursor or not, um, can pop on there, but yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
So, so this project, um, is a, you know, our, our planned unit developments and site plan approval request is for a multiple-unit dwelling, uh, project. And it does consist, it's one development, one owner, under two parcels, though. Uh, and actually, the Amor property, um, is multiple parcels, but, um, so the the project consists of where Al has the cursor on now is what we commonly know as the Jones Building. We're referring to it as the Dairy because Ross Dairy was the historic, um, most notable historic use. Building had multiple uses over time, but, uh, Ross Dairy seems to be, um, the most notable. Um, and that, that parcel on the north, it fronts on River Street, it is part of the National Historic District. Um, and part of D D A, obviously. Um, and that actually consists of four fifty-one and four fifty-three River Street. Although those buildings over time have been combined into one, in terms of internal usability, uh, the exterior is still two distinct sides of two separate buildings. Uh, and then, uh, the project goes across the street to the four forty-three Water Street property. Most of us refer to it as the old Amor sign property. Um, and we're referring to that property, that part of the development as the livery. Because historically, um, uh, the, the, um, uh, use of those properties were just that, they were the livery, they were the backlight, backlot, the outlot parcels that supported the River Street properties. So, uh, just like our housing proposal project will support the River Street entity. Um, uh, so, um, it's historically, you know, a backlot, um, industrial utility type loose. Uh, utility type use, um, and is, and, um, uh, does not fall in the historic district, uh, but does fall in Manistee's D D A. So, uh, as we go through this, um, our designs are historically compatible and, and cohesive. The pretty high level and in, um, being a further enhancement of our downtown River Street District and starting to pull that district, pull that feeling, um, to these backlot properties, in this case being on Water Street. Um, so the, the slide that Al has in front of us now is the Amor property. Uh, it's made up of multiple parcels, uh, to the left is Pine Street. We're fortunate that, um, the property goes out to Pine Street as well as running on Water Street. Uh, and then runs to Oak Street to the, to the right as well, to the east. Um, so we do have this rather steep hill that we all know of that, that comes down from First Street. Um, and slopes to the north, and then also Oak Street, uh, coming from First Street northward to Water Street slopes as well, so, um, so. Uh, so the existing conditions, uh, when I made reference to this being a backlot, outlet, um, more industrial utility use, that's exactly what it is. Um, so, the, uh, the, um, the Amor property, uh, the, will be, the existing building, uh, is slated to be removed and then construction of the new four-story, um, forty-six unit on that parcel, forty-six units, um, four-story development for housing. So, and then on the, um, Dairy property, uh, four fifty-one, four fifty-three River Street, uh, this would be a historic rehabilitation project. Uh, does, again, this property does fall in our, our National Historic District. It's slated as a contributing building within that district. Um, but as we all know, the facade improvements that were done some, you know, some years back um, uh, are not necessarily, um, appropriate. Um, these buildings have been underutilized for years. Um, as, as, um, upstairs has been totally vacant for fifty-plus years. Uh, and the lower level, as it said, was very underutilized. But the intent is that we would do a complete historic rehab of this, uh, with the ground floor, the main level floor, um, having new storefronts that are historically accurate and more in keeping with what, um, historic buildings in our downtown have. Uh, the upstairs being the, uh, proposed three, three-two-bedroom, uh, apartment units. Um, so vast improvements to those facades. So what you have in front of you now, uh, just because it's, um, a little, little easier to read um, than the, uh, the technical site plan, uh, that we'll see here in just a minute. Uh, this is the conceptual site plan, uh, that indicates, uh, the the, uh, four forty-three Water Street property, so it's the livery, that's our, our new four-story building. Again, that'll be forty-six, one and two-bedroom units. Um, it will have twenty-nine standard units, three, uh, one-bedroom, area-free units. Uh, we'll have twelve standard two-bedroom units and two, uh, area-free two-bedroom units, so it's a mix. Um, and, uh, the parking, you can see because we're very fortunate, this
Question? Uh, Kendra? Yeah, I'm sorry. Now, the last lady we talked to said you're gonna have forty-nine units. Now you say you're gonna have forty-six units?
We're going to have forty-nine units total.
Yeah.
But the new four-story building will have forty-six. And then at the, uh, the, uh, River Street property to the north, we'll have three two-bedroom units. Okay, so we have a total of forty-nine units. You're correct on that. Okay.
You've got a total of forty-nine units in the buildings you are talking about.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay. Twenty-five workforce, twenty-five workforce and twenty-four seniors, I understand it.
Exactly. I guess that's correct, Roger.
Okay.
So, the, the, good question. Um, parking, we have a total of seventy-four parking spaces. Eight parking spaces around the south parcel and six around the north parcel. Uh, so, and, uh, you know, in terms of
Just a second here, Kendra. Mick's, Mick's raising his hand here. Oh, let me unmute you, Mick. There you go. Okay.
That was, that was all. I was just unmuted. Thank you.
Okay. Um, uh, so then on the, the, uh, River Street parcel, again, that's an existing two-story structure, um, we'll be tearing off demolition, demolition, demolishing the, um, the, uh, single-story garage additions that, um, oops, Al, why don't you go back to, yeah, there we go. Uh, the, uh, two single-story garage additions that are on the, uh, south side facing Water Street will be demolishing those, and then we'll be, um, constructing a new, um, entry area um, coming in off of Water Street that will provide, uh, separate security entrance uh, for the tenant spaces upstairs, as well as the main entrance or secondary entrance to the main level commercial spaces. On those main level, um, commercial areas will be, um, offices to support the development, meeting rooms, community rooms, amenities. We may pop, uh, some exercise room equipment in, into a room in that area, so. And the development of, of the River Street property, the Dairy, uh, component of this is very much in keeping with what we've been doing downtown all along. We're taking the upper levels and putting in housing units, um, and then developing the main floor River Street uh, level for commercial, commercial, uh, usage, so. Other component is, uh, is, Al, maybe you can go back to the site plan. Um, there you go. Um, between the, the Dairy Building and the existing United Way, part of this property is the fourteen-foot-wide alleyway. And, uh, that will become a pocket park, uh, so it will provide that connectivity um, between the south development of the livery building directly to downtown. I'd like to say directly to the new Italian restaurant going in at the old, old, the four forty Boathouse, so. Um, so, uh, uh, we have green space, it'll clean up that alleyway, uh, you know, we'll provide, you know, some vegetation and trees and park benches, so. Uh, it, you know, it'll be coming, uh, become a contributing asset to our downtown as opposed to just a, a old dilapidated alleyway, so. Um, so from this technical site plan, and Al, you can leave it on this page for a second here. Um, that will, what's, what, um, we're proposing at each of the entrances from our main parking lot, so going out to Pine Street from the parking area, as well as coming in and going out to Water Street is a, um, continuation of streetscape elements that will be incorporating the stone sill walls and the municipal street lights, so we're bringing in more of River Street and letting it overflow into the Water Street area. We hope that this is just a catalyst for, um, other, other, um, backlot areas um, beyond River Street to continue what, um, city has been going with, with the streetscape. Also at the, uh, upper right-hand corner, um, it, so it'd be the northeast, the, uh, the northeast corner of the livery property, at the intersection, we will have streetscape, stone wall, um, there as well. So, um, the lighting, so we'll be keeping with, we're at the streetscape or at the, the sidewalk edges would be continuation of the city's, um, streetscaping internally. Then we'll go to the L E D, um, shoebox downlighting fixtures that were included in the site plan package. We do have at the south end of the parking area, um, an enclosed dumpster. And in fact, that dumpster, um, will be A D A accessible all the way And in fact, that dumpster will be ADA accessible all the way to the dumpster and including. An ADA compliant opening into the dumpster for any potential handicap users of that. So dumpster will be screened for all of the city standards. And so I know a question came up. About playground equipment and children playing. And although we don't anticipate a lot of children being in this build, these buildings. The potential could exist for that to happen. But when these buildings get built and they, they become occupied. There will be a residents council that'll get established. And residents council is a, you know, it's, it's just that. It's a group that helps to determine, you know, what their needs are, address issues, address. Concerns and also throw out ideas. And so the placement of amenities, site amenities. Can be a derivative of the, of the residents council. So if there becomes a need or a desire to have. You know, on the south side of the livery building, a grill and a patio area. Or raised garden boxes that all could occur there, just as children's playground equipment could occur there. If the desire of the residents, if there was a need. So we would certainly address that. As an, on an as-needed basis.
One comment, Kendra, if I can step in, as we're, as we're talking about the potential of children residing in the units. As Mr. Parks had mentioned in his letter, he was. Curious about what the, the occupancy requirements would be per bedroom. Because these are not voucher units. Basically, there, there is some very basic guidelines in terms of no more than two people per bedroom. However, there's not a minimum requirement. So if, say, we have a young professional that wants to. Bedroom unit, as long as their income can support that rent, they're allowed to have a two-bedroom unit. Seniors may end up, you know, if we have all of the designated senior units filled. It may be seniors that fill some of those workforce housing units as well. So there's no age restrictions. There's, there's, there are restrictions in terms of maximum number of people per bedroom, but there is no minimum. So it is quite feasible that we may have couples or single individuals that choose to have two-bedroom units. Rather than those units being filled solely by households with children. And so as Kendra mentioned, we're waiting to. Really get that feedback from what the residents would like that space to be used for the most. In our other developments, our resident councils are active, they be on a monthly or quarterly basis. To express those needs and then we could put in, as Kendra said, a grilling space or gardens or playground, whatever. Would really enhance that community experience.
So I do have a question. With the, with the establishment of these residents council, how do they pay for their improvements?
That would be coming out of our ongoing operations budgets.
Okay.
Yeah. So man, the management, the onsite management company, so there will be an onsite management company. That oversees the day-to-day operations. And so they would have the authority to, to use funds for those additional improvements.
And, and your onsite management company, they're gonna be based in Flint, Michigan, is that correct?
Well, they'll be based onsite, but their main corporate offices are out of Flint. We're currently using that management company for one of our properties in Heart, in Hart. And they're also going to be used for newer development that we are currently have underway for Shelby as well. So they do already have a fairly local presence and they'll be expanding.
Thank you for that clarification.
Kitty, Kitty, I have a question. Thank you for taking it. Maintenance staff, are you gonna have maintenance on, onsite or is this a? I wanna say for better por, better term jobbed out.
No, that, that's a great question. No, there will be maintenance onsite. So that's part of that management package is that there will be an onsite management staff person and an onsite maintenance staff person.
Okay.
Yes, so they'll be able to respond to any needs, you know, on an on-call basis and as a regular upkeep.
And the building design has a maintenance space included and designed into the floor plan.
So a maintenance, maintenance office?
Yeah, a maintenance room that's rather large that would have plenty of room for. So what we've found is they probably will do their own keying. So they'll have a tool bench and they'll do their own keying for lots of. They'll, they'll.
Store their equipment.
Store their equipments to deal with any of the, the, you know, normal maintenance issues that'll arise. So. So I won't say that they have a plush office, but they have a very nice maintenance room, of which they'll have a desk. And chair. The, let's see, um, the next sheet, Al, maybe flip to that, yeah, there. And again, I know, I, you've had this in your packet and I don't wanna spend a lot of time going through this. But from a utilities standpoint, we're fortunate that both water and rivers, water, River Street and Oak Street. All have adequate municipal services. Both of these buildings, the Dairy and the Livery will get full fire suppression. So then we'll be doing, you know, coordinating with the fire department for those connections. And taps and locations and putting in knox box like Brent, you know, the, the fire marshal likes to have. Similar to what we did at the college project. From a stormwater standpoint, in the large parking lot, you see some dashed lines, a couple of rectangular boxes. And what you're, what those are, are a storm, a chamber underneath the parking area. So stormwater will be directed to that and then it will have a released, slow, slow release of stormwater. So it will not immediately dump out to the municipal stormwater, it'll be in a controlled fashion. And that meets all of the guidelines and requirements of stormwater management, so.
You, you see this, actually the Walgreens and Filer Township has this, but you wouldn't know it was there. It's underneath the parking lot as well, so.
So just in lieu of a retention pond.
Correct, yep. And commonly done at areas, you know, where you don't have a lot of acreage to have a retention pond. Nor do you want to have a retention ponds in this area, even if we did have a property. So the next slide there. So this is the design concept for the livery. So this is our new building. And I use the words cohesive, compatible with our, you know, downtown historic district. So it has a wrong first floor detail line with a heavy stone. Facade treatment, kind of an intermediate belt line that separates that main floor from the upper floors. And, and then at the roofline area, we'll do a simple cornice line. That would be, you know, historically compatible. Windows are proportionate to, to, you know, historic windows and design. What you're seeing on this are what I would call Juliet balconies. So these are not balconies where you go out and have a party or even put a grill out. They are just simple, you know, sixteen-inch-deep. Rod iron, actually they're aluminum, type of detailing. North Channel Brewery has a couple of these. That provides a nice enhancement to a building for what could otherwise be a pretty plain building facade. And then entry roofs in the lower right-hand corner area, you can see that they'd just be simple, low-profile. Rooflines. And you can also see some of the intentions for carrying through the streetscape. So as you enter into the parking area, we're in the middle section of the building. We do have a small community room that would. Have the ability to go out to a, a small gathering area and that would be protected and detailed out with the, the. You know, the municipal streetscape theme being carried on, so.
Kendra?
Yep.
The, the bump outs on the, would, which would be the east and west sides of the building?
Yes.
Are those stairwells or apartments?
Those are stairwells. So what you're seeing is all glass as it faces the street. On those stairwells and for, for a couple of reasons. But that definitely gives us that visibility in those stairwells as opposed to them being a solid wall. Helps with security, brings light, natural light into those stairwells. And just makes it a little, little more interesting in terms of a side detail as well.
Thank you.
Next slide. So we already took a little peek at this and you can on the left see the, the current existing.
Kendra? Before you move to the next slide, the building I'm looking at, we had, there you go. Was it, ever any thought about putting a garden on the roof?
So, um, garden roofs?
Garden, yes.
Yeah. Nice as that sounds, Roger. And I've had projects where I've discussed it with, with owners. They're very costly. They're very costly. So, um, you know, desirable, and if I win the lottery, if I win the big lottery. Maybe I'll, I'll think about contributing that to the project, you know, to the good of the cause, but.
It is one of my long-range visions to be able to do beautiful green features like that in some of our future projects. But as a nonprofit, we're not quite at that point where we can put out that extra, those extra funds. But I appreciate that vision.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I will say though, and you know, just carrying that, that building green theory through. Both of these properties will be developed, be developed with the Enterprise Green Communities certification. And Enterprise Green Communities certification is equal to LEED certification. We've done LEED projects. We've found that the Enterprise Green certification is a much nicer. Procedure to go through and a lot less bureaucracy with the same end results. So both these buildings will be designed so that the tenants, we're helping them to minimize their, you know, monthly utility cost. Um, so, so the rendering, flip back to that one, there we go. So this is the south elevation, the Water Street elevation that's proposed. And, and again, this is two buildings. The building, the, on the right, which is the east building, is Manistee's oldest, his last remaining wood-framed. Structure in our downtown. It survived the great fire. Don't ask me why, but my understanding is it survived the great fire. So, and it was a clapboard lap siding. Building after the great fire, that's when we started getting the, the brick buildings. So, so in keeping with that and from the, you know, these, these facades will be developed with both the city manistees. Historic commissions, historic district commissions, review and approval. But the state historic preservation office and the US Department of Interior Standards for Rehab will play an integral part. In the review and approval of these facades. So the east building would be a lap siding. With some upper transom details. And then the west building, the larger building, would be a masonry detailed project. So, and then just simple, simple roof lines, you know, to, to the entry area. We do have a grade difference that we have to accommodate from the ground floor to our, our building's main level. So we have a burial-free ramp that will provide burial-free access into this building at this level. Coming in off of River Street is actually about twenty inches from the municipal sidewalk into the building. So it'll be the south side that will provide us with that burial-free entrance to the Dairy Building. Okay, next slide. There. So again, I won't spend much time on this, but the floor plan for the livery, so this is the four-story building. At the bottom is the main floor where we have entrances coming in at both the northwest corner. And the southwest corner. So it brings people in from the parking lot, come into a lobby area, elevator. And stairwell. And. And then. One in, a mix of one and two bedrooms occurs on each floor, so. And then at the Dairy Building, the lower plan is the River Street level plan. So we enter in either off of River Street or off of the, the Water Street entrance. In lobby area, offices, meeting room, community room type space. And also a secured entrance for the three-two-bedroom unit tenants above. Okay, and so. Again, the, the enterprise green, you know, energy efficiency for both buildings. Will be a real asset for the tenants and the benefit for the tenants on their monthly utility cost. All of these units are designed, you know, full kitchen, appliances, dishwasher, disposal refrigerator. Range, central air, large closets, walk-in closets or large closets. In-unit washers and dryers. So every tenant has their own washer and dryer. These are all set up computer outlets, you know, internet accessible, cable TV accessible. Community spaces, meeting rooms, and then the project also has incorporated into it that we would have a. Senior community van that would provide private tip, private transportation for those. Users that have special needs in getting to the grocery store, the doctor's appointments or what have you. That dial-a-ride is not able to support them.
So this, this van, just as a minor aside, is a van that we would be purchasing as part of the development. For the counts on aging and they would operate it and operate the route. So it's very much a partnership where they would be providing the driver, we would be providing the van and annual. Dollars to support maintenance and upkeep and it would be available to all of the residents of the development for a fixed route to hit. Main amenities throughout the city of Manistee. And then from beyond that, once we, once the fixed route has been, you know, met, usually I think we have it set for twice a day. The, the counts on aging can use that van for other senior needs. So they could use it to deliver meals on wheels, they could take seniors to doctor's appointments, whatever, whatever they would like to use it for. So this is part of that wonderful community collaboration that we have with the counts on aging. That it'll benefit the tenants, but it'll also benefit the broader community and offer some additional transportation opportunities. To enhance what dial-a-ride already does.
In your other projects, do you have transportation?
We, we don't, except for. We will have, we have partnerships with local transportation providers. But this is the first time that we are purchasing a van and providing it to a partner agency. To do that route. So otherwise, we, we have partnerships with area dial-a-rides, for example.
Would that, would that van be purchased by, from a local dealership?
It very well could be. Yes, if there's a van that locally, we, we like to do as much local as we can. So if there is a local dealership that can provide, it needs to be a wheelchair-accessible van. And can meet those specifications, then we would absolutely purchase it local versus taking that out of town. Likewise, in terms of contractor work that we have done. We generally will, we like to have as many local subcontractors as we can. It's difficult for local general contractors to be able to always meet the requirements, the bonding requirements that Mishda has. But, but typically, we usually have about a quarter of our construction work done by local contractors. construction work done by local contractors.
You with that said, do you feel comfortable enough because it is as Kendra knows, busy in the construction industry to get contractors to work on this?
Yes, yes, we already have commitments with West Construction to be the general contractor. On this project, so they've they've already expressed their commitment and have already been in a communication with subcontractors and working on preparing those conversations. Nobody has actually submitted any commitments for the subcontractors or anything like that yet because we we're a little early in the process yet. We have to have construction drawings and those budgets yet. But as interest is coming through, as we're receiving those communications, we're we're passing that to our general contractors. So that when the time is ready, we can have locals bid on those packages.
And West Construction is Kyle Westberg, so that would be Tom and Sandy, that'd be Sandy Amor's son, Tommy Moore's stepson. So he is, you know, grew up in our area and and very sensitive to infusing local contractors as much as possible.
The West Construction would be doing the four story and the River Street location?
Yeah, they would serve as general contractor for the project development.
Okay.
Yep. And then, just like on the college projects, we were really successful and, you know, custom sheet metal provided all the HVAC and plumbing. And CNI Electric out of Lettington, but they do a lot of work in Manistee, handled the electrical for that. So we're real, it's important to me, Mark, I absolutely am on page, you know, and I'm bored with you that wherever we can infuse local contractors that are qualified and capable of working on this, we're going to, and we certainly will give them the opportunity.
That would go for the roofers, be roofing companies, because we do have a few in town?
Absolutely. So if they're they're able to provide the the materials, the systems, the the products, the installation that's needed, absolutely. So, so we, so I like to use the phrase, Mark, that we will give local contractors and suppliers the opportunity. And that's, that's all we can really do. We give them the opportunity and then where the numbers fall is is, you know, with them and the general contractor in this case. And then
I can, sorry.
And then, you know, as as the developer, uh, we always put in a percentage of the overall construction that we have goals set of having local utilization.
And even when, you know, for example, as we receive bids from subcontractors to do the work, if we have a local subcontractor that comes in slightly higher than, say, a larger contractor out of Grand Rapids, we're going to pick the local guy, you know, if that cost difference isn't, you know, a deal breaker, basically, we're gonna, we're gonna err on the side of a little bit higher cost to have that local contractor because it it provides that return on investment locally for these dollars. And that's what we want to see. We want to see those local jobs. We want to see the money staying in the community. So even if it's costing a little bit more, if it's, if it's workable and we can keep it within our budget, we we do that as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, absolutely. When when there's a problem and the light switch doesn't work, we want to call the local electrician to come and fix it. We don't want to, you know, have someone coming from hours away. Same with, you know, plumbing and roofing and so forth. So Kitty's absolutely right.
Yeah, completely understand on that, so, okay.
Oh, Ms. Tunstra, I I've got a question for you before we go off of the subject. When it comes to the River Street side, is it possible for some space to be sanctioned off for a pharmacy annex? Because I know that's something that we had looked at in the original senior center project across the river. And it not only does it deliver a service to our community, but it also elevates our walkability score.
Yes, yes. And honestly, you're speaking to a point, one of the challenges that we have within Manistee in some of the points for the application is how close pharmacies are, because pharmacies are are pretty spread out. They're, you know, north at Meyer or down by, you know, Family Fair, Rite Aid, Walgreens. And so there's kind of a middle ground where it's missing. I I guess it would be, that might be more of a question for Kendra on whether some of that commercial space. But we certainly are not opposed to that. And one of the, one of the the ideas that we have even with some of the extra office spaces, that might be space that could be used by other service providers that might come in to be able to meet with, you know, residents and and meet some of those needs as well. So it could be, you know, a nursing program, anything like that.
Well, the the reason why I mention this is that there's been some recent changes in Michigan where you don't have to have an on-site pharmacy. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe you're partnering with the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians.
Yes.
And I believe they do have a pharmacy.
Do.
So it may be something that you can connect and actually kind of develop your own win-win uh, between your partner.
So, so I think that's a great idea. I think that that will evolve depending on how how the, you know, tenant needs evolve and the space is definitely flexible.
Well, and the only reason I say that is it gives you some additional points if you develop it into the project. I believe you may get some additional points.
I
Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah. What I would love to have happen is because we're having an influx of housing that a pharmacist decides that, hey, I need a presence in this community of downtown River Street. And whether it's in our building or another building in the downtown area uh, to plug into.
Yeah.
I think we have common goals and whether it it fits in, um, you know, the dairy building or fits in a a other downtown space, I think you're right on as far as that need being there. Um, so in summary, I just, you know, I guess I just want to say uh, the positive impacts of this project, you know, we're addressing the needs of providing work faith, workforce housing, senior housing in our community. We're taking baby steps. Forty-nine units may seem like a lot of units, but we know that our overall housing needs are great. So this is one step. Um, and and with with the main component, the four story livery building being on what I consider a back lot to our showplace of River Street, so we're not taking away anything from the River Street commercial identity. Uh, we're enhancing the viability of it. The historic rehabilitation of the dairy building, the four fifty-one, four fifty-three buildings that are currently not contributing buildings in in any real meaningful way to our downtown and to be able to take those and and be able to do a proper historic rehab to those facades would be incredible. And this project can can let that happen. So um, so thank you for, you know, looking at this project, for working with us on this project and we're hopeful, we're looking for the planning commission's support of the PUD and the site plan approval. And after public comments, if there's any, you know, for the questions that I can clarify or answer, Kitty can help address, uh, we, you know, we're welcome to to kind of have a response.
I do have a couple of questions and hopefully the elders do too. On the River Street location, do you have HDC approval yet?
We do not. And it's, so when we go to Historic District Commission for their review, we'll be working simultaneously with the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, uh, because this potentially will be a tax credit, historic tax credit project. Um, and so we'll work simultaneously with the HDC and Shippo's office on that. Uh, and at that point, we'll have very detailed drawings of of the facade, the exact, precise material selections and colors. So that when we're going to them, we're we're going for, you know, a full review and approval.
Okay.
So.
And to chime in, Mark, a little bit on this, on the HDC approval. One thing is with any PUD, you guys, you guys have the ability to select those materials, those colors, those signage. The issue on this is you kind of have a mixed bag here. You have some buildings that are in the HDC and some that aren't. The HDC is typically very strict on materials that are that are present within um, the area. This this project checks a lot of boxes from the SWOT analysis that was done. Strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats for Manistee as far as like affordable housing, reusing of buildings downtown. I, and and, you know, senior housing as well as as workforce housing. Um, with saying that, we do have recommendations that we would like to give forward that after you guys have answered your questions, one of those was the HDC approval. Um, and, you know, moving forward with it, this project could bounce back and forth between the planning commission and HDC. Our recommendation, since the Shippo guidelines and the HDC is going to be usually more enforceful as well as making them, holding them to a higher standard where they're blending into the neighborhood is we allow approval, if granted by you guys, if you're, you know, comfortable, if that is a motion that you make, that the HDC has the the final say as to, you know, appropriate materials, color and signage within these two buildings and that they blend within each other. Um, that, you know, they don't have to keep going back and forth and holding up the development of this project as well as applying for what they need to move forward.
That makes sense to me.
Sorry, Nick, or Robert Owen.
Yeah, I've been trying to unmute for quite a while and it wouldn't let me. I had a question a while back, but I don't remember it right now. And Pam's been the same way, trying to unmute, she's not being able to talk either.
Yeah, I'm used to that with Mike, though. How, from start to finish, how long do you see this project taking?
So, um, tax credit applications are due in February first. We probably won't have announcement on those until early summer. Uh, there's some logistics once, if we are successful in having those approved um, in lining up, you know, things, construction drawings. This is a big project. Construction drawings are going to take a period of time. So optimistically, there are some in the group that think we possibly could start yet this fall, late fall. Um, reality of the design professional is twenty twenty-two.
That sounds reasonable, yeah.
You know, my team's pretty good at doing whatever it takes to get something done, but reality kicks in there. Um, and in actually having, you know, the builders committed and and so forth. So um, and then we see this as probably a twelve to fifteen month, you know, start to completion.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question yet. On that retaining wall between the building, how far up the bank toward the real estate office is it going to go?
Um, yeah, L, maybe flip back a few pages to the survey. So, to 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 to, let's see. Um, can you go back one? And no, no, let's so, huh, I wish my hands were touching.
I know you talked about a step retaining wall, I was just wondering how far you're going to go up.
So do you see where his cursor is, there's a dark line that's in an L shape? That's a retaining wall. Um, and then at the lower portion, back by the garbage, that is a retaining wall as well. The rest of that grade actually has a more gentle, even though it's steep, it's a more gentle slope. Where we are not looking to do a retaining wall uh, between those. And that allows us to have more green space, allows us to keep some of the trees that are there without cutting into roots and and killing trees. So, and that retaining well is detailed on the site plan package. I think we'll do the stacked uh, gravity, gravity, you know, rocks. Um, and it is going to vary a little bit on those two locations, but it's going to be twelve to fifteen feet in height. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay, perfect.
Kendra or Kitty, with the workforce housing and senior housing, are you going to have separation in that or are they going to be next door to each other? How how is that going to work? Because of the change.
Sure. It actually, so the blueprint, the floor print, everything stays as it's as it's proposed currently. Basically, that's one of the components that the management company will manage. So there's a, it's kind of a complex ratio of how many units, you know, are senior units and how many units are workforce. But then we also have units broken up into different income ranges and corresponding rent levels for those income ranges. And so as units are vacant, typically, for example, if we, with the initial lease up of all of the units, you know, everybody, all of the units are going to be filled according to the designated populations that we need to meet. They can be anywhere within the building. So we're not going to separate floors. You know, a floor for seniors or a floor for workforce, they'll be intermixed, which is most healthy in a community. Just like any neighborhood.
Also recommended by Sarah at the Council on Aging. She thought it should be just mixed.
Exactly. And so then, so there is a little bit of flexibility, you know, as time goes on. Um, you know, you might find that at one point, you know, one unit was, has historically been a senior unit because, you know, if if a tenant vacates and they were a senior, then a person that's going to replace that tenant has to be a senior in order to keep the right tenant mix. But if we have multiple vacancies at once, then there's a little bit of flexibility in terms of, you know, if we have three two bedroom units that are vacant at the same time, spread across both buildings, then there's more of a choice of whether, you know, a tenant wants to live at the dairy building or they want to live at the livery and what, what criteria they fulfill. So I'm not sure if I'm being very clear, but ultimately, it'll be mixed. There won't be distinct areas for for each population.
And and with, there was a comment from Mr. Parks on playground. I mean, you're, you may have several children in this facility and kids are rambunctious, as we all know. What are they going to do for a play area?
Yeah, so that goes back to where, you know, we had, we had said that the residents council, if they are are feeling like, hey, we need, we need, we have so many kids in this building, we need to have some playground of accommodations. There's space to the south of this delivery building uh, to place that playground equipment there. Uh, I honestly, though, am not anticipating that there's going to be a whole bunch of kids in this building. Just because these are are one and two bedroom units. Uh, they're not three bedroom and we specifically don't have this as three bedroom developments. We've done projects where we do have three bedroom units where we're focused in on providing um, housing for families with children. It doesn't mean that there won't be children in this building. I don't want to mislead you on that at all. But I don't think it's going to be such an enormous amount uh, that requires a full playground. Um, so if my approach to this and from a community planning standpoint is, let's not put playground equipment if there isn't a need. Um, and if there is a need, we'll pop it in and the residents council will demand it and and the management company, like Kitty said earlier, um, has has, you know, some funds available to implement and respond to those council needs.
Okay.
The other, the other aspect as well, and I think this is part of the community integration, when when you're talking about walkable communities, is you really also want to encourage um, use of common park spaces and recreation spaces as well. So it would be great, you know, if residents want that space, you know, on site, we will work with that. But we also want to, you know, stress that But we also want to, you know, stress that there are other recre- recreational opportunities within the area that residents can take advantage of as well. So we just want to be responsive to what their needs will actually be rather than, um, supposing what they are and finding that we put in a playground equipment when really what they wanted was, uh, a more universal outdoor gathering area, um, that could be utilized by all residents. A grilling area or garden space as Kendra mentioned. Um, so.
That in your, your residence council, resident council, residents. If, if they wanted to have some gym equipment, like a treadmill or a stair stepper, something light weights or anything, more than likely you would do it.
Yeah, yeah. And actually that's one of the, the plans that we have for, um, some of the community space already is, is the potential to put some basic exercise equipment, um, in it as well. So that there is that opportunity to, to exercise inside, especially in the winter time, help with senior health and health overall.
Any other questions by the commission? Pam?
No, I'm, I'm good. That sounds great.
Marlene? Marlene? Is she unmuted, Mike? Marlene, are you with her? Now I'll jump to Roger. Do you have any questions?
Well, my question is, it's not, I mean, I, the project sounds good and everything. But my only concern is which was brought up over the hotel proposal on the first street. But the amount of housing that we're, they're looking at, our, our sewage system and our, uh, basic utilities, large enough to handle the influx. We've got a project on the north side that's putting out what twenty rooms or thirty rooms? And this is forty-nine, so, I mean, can we handle it?
Yes, the, the municipal services are readily available. There's eight inch sewer line that we'll be tapping into and then the water line will be tapping in. And it's more than adequate to support, um, both the domestic water needs and the fire suppression needs. And then in terms of the storm water, um, you know, we had discussed as far as we have the onsite management system that holds that flow of water. So you don't have a, a large influx of storm water into the municipal services. I don't know of any other project in the city that has a storm management system of this nature. So, um, we're doing good things here to, to help mitigate any concerns on that, um, municipal services.
Well, that was my question probably primarily to Mike than anyone else Kendra, but I appreciate the input. But Mike, to you, are we capable of handling the amount of rooms that we have been talking about lately?
With this building, um, I think there's two things really on it. The target market is kind of a big, a big portion when you guys are talking about playground equipment and current planning thought in theory. And one of those is, uh, the people that are wanting to live downtown are usually your seniors and your younger professionals. This, this first and foremost, this building applies to both of them. So like you have, uh, a set amount of money that is set aside for the affordability of both those, those target markets really. And it's one to two, uh, person, you know, bedrooms where, um, it's, it's more targeting that than more families. So I think that, that first needs to be discussed. As far as can this property handle this and, and can, uh, the downtown area, you know, handle this amount of influx? And I would say this is exactly the kind of project that we'd want downtown. It's got a parking facility that can handle it with three, uh, or, um, with a, a good, uh, flow of traffic in there. Two, two, uh, one main area and then one side. You know, I, I really think that as far as like a foot traffic increase, it could handle it. We do have some concerns and recommendations that we'll share, but overall this is, this is a good project for, for downtown. It's on the back lot, which is, is traditionally not developed to this, this, uh, this, you know, really a professional level. Um, and with certain of the storm water maintenance that they're implementing is, is definitely, uh, what you want to see on a project of this size. Um, having stagnant water that would take, um, you know, before it, it went into the sewer system and then flushed out to the river. A holding chamber is, is really good too, because then we're not, we're not shocking the river as well. When we talk about the capacity of this property to handle this, I say yes. When we talk about the capacity of the downtown area to handle this, again, it's yes. This is the kind of development that really the city's been asking for. There's also with the development of the upstairs, um, of the dairy. That's what we've been traditionally trying to get, uh, the, the owners of the buildings and the DDA to do. So with HTC approval and them keeping, uh, the facade and everything in line with the rest of River Street, um, and then, you know, being affordable housing in the sense of not, you know, uh, subsidizes, is like a, uh, you know, a workforce and a senior housing, but at the level that, you know, it can be utilized by most of our residents currently. Um, and this isn't a project that's going to be built for, uh, gentrification. It's, it's, it's actually a really good project and I think it can be handled very well within the, the current system we have in that area. I know there's been concern on this, this project for, um, a number of different reasons of, you know, I don't, we don't want to see this develop into, you know, um, a century terrace, if you will, um, that had, that comment has come up. There's, there, it's, it's, we would like to see controls put in place, obviously to handle that. One of which being those onsite managers, those maintenance people. But, um, if additional concerns need to be put on or in place, then we, you know, we'd welcome them. I mean, when you look at the, the community, um, and you know, their thoughts and, and their feelings towards it, if, if you feel that there needs to be additional concerns on it, you can make that as a stipulation. However, uh, with the one to two bedroom in the target and where they're going, you know, I'd have more concern and Kendra was exactly right. If she went with a three-person bedroom and these were a bunch of even, even all two-person, I would, I'd be more concerned, but, uh, I think that this is, this is a project geared towards the residents of Manistee that currently are here and desperately need housing. Um, it's, it's not made for the future residents. And I think that in, in and of itself is a good thing.
Uh, Shelley, do you have any comments, questions? Shelley? Okay, thank you. Is Marlene with us?
I've been looking for her to, her number for dialing in, but I don't see it currently. At least not her cell phone number. So I'm going to say she's, she's not with us right now.
Yeah, I got something for Kendra. The under parking lot, uh, retention for these storms, is that going to be strictly holding water or is it going to have some semi-leaching capabilities?
So now you're getting me into some muddy waters here and I don't have, I don't have my, uh, civil engineers on the line. Spicer Group is, you know, our city engineers, but they also were the civil engineers for this project.
Okay, yeah, because, because you get too much of a rain in there, it's going to fill them up too much, too quick and then you're going to have an overflow problem. But if it's got some leaching capabilities, that'll help mi- mitigate it.
Yep. So, uh, I feel confident that our city engineer has looked at this and has designed it appropriately, uh, to, to work with the municipal services as well.
Okay. And this did go to site plan review where they reviewed it. Bob, just to let you know.
Okay.
Last but not least, Nick?
Yeah, you know, again, I am, I am so pleased with the presentation that you've made. I think you've, uh, clarified and hopefully this information will get out to a lot of the concerned citizens. That this is truly housing that we desperately need to grow our workforce. I mean, I, I will tell you that, you know, our superintendent of schools, uh, constantly, uh, comments on the fact that it, it's very difficult for him to hire teachers and to keep teachers in Manistee. Because there's no place for a young teacher to find to stay that they can afford in Manistee. They end up having to live in Lexington and then guess what? It's the first opportunity for a, a job opening in Lexington, they leave. So, you know, this, this is so good for us. Having the young professionals downtown will be a boon for our, our downtown merchants, especially our restaurant merchants. Because again, uh, this is the generation that likes to go out and eat and so do our seniors, by the way. Our seniors, you know, hey, they've cooked for sixty years. They want to be able to go out and relax at dinnertime and not have to worry about cleaning up the dishes. So I think that overall, this is going to be a phenomenal improvement for downtown Manistee as well as for our community. And, and I am sure that it will be, uh, a well-appreciated success once it started. But I still want my pharmacy. So work on that for me, would you?
All right. I'm hearing you, Mick.
We have one question. Sorry.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Is there, is there a basement level on the larger building?
No.
No.
No, there would not be a basement. No. And, and on the River Street, you know, on the, the dairy, there is an existing basement and it would, it would remain. But it's just utility type space.
That's what I was wondering, utilities, if they were hiding all the utilities down, downstairs, but thank you.
All right. Um, with, with that said, Mark, if we could go into the recommendations, if you're comfortable, we do have some.
Okay.
Zach, if you want to read some of our questions, we actually have another question as well that, that it came up during a site planner review committee. So I'll let Zach go ahead and, and if you, those of you that don't know Zach, I, I should apologize. I've been working with him for a while. Zach is our new planner here at Manistee County. He'll be eventually transitioning into the city and kind of running, you know, the things for you guys and, um, but, you know, right, right now is first planning commission meeting, so.
Yeah. I was wondering who the man behind the curtain was. It's just me. Good to see you, Zach. Welcome to Manistee.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Um, so one of, one of the, uh, recommendations we had was, was kind of the HTC thing we'd kind of covered where the HTC has, has the approval of all, of any external improvements on the, on the northern building there on the dairy.
And, and really when, when we're talking about that, one thing is if you guys are comfortable allowing the HTC to have the facade signage and lighting, uh, uh, final review and approval of that. To keep them from bouncing back and forth and, and, you know, they're going through SHIPO already, but they, they do have a, a higher standard. The museum director, Mark Fetter, will ensure that it blends into the neighborhood. But one thing that I know, uh, they are kind of tied against as a timeline. And, you know, we're trying to help them out as much as we can, but one of those things is if you guys are not comfortable with that, then, uh, you know, you can retain that, but they would have to come back for, for, uh, final approval. Now, we would, we would like to say that, um, the HTC, you know, and we, we tend to recommend towards that, that you allow them to, um, look at the facade and say that it blends in with River Street. Um, and use their historical knowledge and expertise to ensure that this building blends into the area. It's not a sore thumb. It's not something that we look at in, in twenty or thirty years and we're like, man, that is an eyesore. We really want to ensure that they have that control. Um, but if you guys are comfortable with this being a PUD, you can, within your motion, approve with final approval through, um, the HTC granting that, I, I say final approval, but the, the, the approval of the HTC really on any facade, um, you know, lighting or, yeah, as far as what lighting they're using and, uh, landscaping, uh, those types of, of things on each of these buildings. And then I think we have a couple more, don't we, Zach?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, you kind of covered those things. One of the things, uh, Kendra, for you is that any changes towards, to the narrative, um, you make those, if you make those changes, they're going to come back to us so we can, we can take a look at them again.
If you, basically if you made any changes or, or there's any recommendations for changes within the, within tonight, a- as part of that, that approval, we just get those updates. That's really what we're requesting. So go ahead, Zach.
Yeah. And so as far as the, the site planner review committee, some of the things that they, comments and requirements and questions, they kind of had. One of the, one of the comments was just a reminder that there's no work before eight AM unless, without the city manager approval. The, uh, from the city engineers and, um, from, from Mike there. The ballards across the walkway at River Street along the removal of the curb.
So this came from, yeah, this came from the, uh, the, not only Jeff McCool, but also, um, Chief Glass there. One concern that they had was when you guys had that walkable park out to, um, to the, where the new Italian restaurant is going to be, um, from the dairy there. One concern that they had was there's a curve cut there. They would like to see the elimination of that curb cut. And bullards put right there to prevent any cars from driving through there.
And either ballards, and, and there could either be ballards or it may be, uh, vegetation. So, you know, we may have.
You know, we just, we want something there that, that prevents traffic from going in and out.
Will do. Yep.
Another, another comment and question that came up was the acknowledgement that there is some existing parking on the site location on the, on the southern part especially and, and kind of, is there a plan in place of where that's going to go, where those people are expected to park now?
So that, uh, I did some checking on that when I saw that on, on the, the review list and, um, there is no lease or anything of the sort, um, no official lease with the Amors, uh, for that parking. They have a, a little bit of an agreement where, um, uh, one of the apartments on one of the River Street buildings. And I don't know with exactly which one it is, uh, but they have two people that park there. Anyone else that's parking there, you know, isn't really supposed to be. And Tom Amor has allowed for two people to park there. But it's not a legal, uh, arrangement by any means. So, and then in the C-three district, the parking spaces are technically not required for those, those units that are, are parking on town's property.
Correct. Um, we, we did have a question if there could be some kind of agreement, because the last thing we want to do is eliminate parking, even if it's not a, a contracted agreement. There is a lot to the northwest that's currently used as a parking lot. Is there any kind of way that we could try to facilitate them, the, the, the parking or development of that area in any way? It's right behind, it's kind of by the city museum. Do you know, it's, it's a dirt lot, but there is parking that currently takes place there.
Yeah. So I would hope that arrangements could be a ma- made with, with those folks to park on that as well. Because that's an underutilized parking lot, actually.
That's a private.
It's a private lot and, you know, if, if there's, I mean, it really makes it difficult that there's no legal a- arrangement. It's not a, and with the grandfathered use already in there, it's, it's, I mean, I understand what you're saying. It is a question that was posed to us and we are hoping that, um, you know, there's something that could be done on it, but I understand that you're under no obligation to do so, so.
Yeah, if we could in any way facilitate those two entities of the parking lot, property owner and, um, you know, these couple of apartment, uh, dwelling folks getting together and, um, we would help do that.
So we would, we would welcome that. We'd welcome that. That's not a stipulation of ours. It was simply a question where we were like, hey, there's, there's currently marked parking there. Is it, is it a contracted thing? And if so, are you guys, are you guys, you know, going to relocate those people? Since it's not, then. there's currently marked parking there, is it, is it a contracted thing and if so, are you guys, are you guys, you know, going to relocate those people, since it's not, then.
And I can, I can see.
Facilitation though.
Okay, and I can talk with the Amors and see if, if we can help open some dialogue.
Okay, Zach, is there anything else?
Yeah, there's a few more. So another kind of reminder here is to fill out the city infrastructure connection and breakage form.
Yep.
That's going to go along with pretty much any development around there. Um, the fire department here wants the Knox box or the master set of keys and that's going to be assigned approval, that's a, that's a requirement they're going to want. Um, they are also looking for FDC connections on the, uh, site plan and ones installed if there aren't any, so they're going to want their signature on that one as well.
Yep.
Any of the fire, the fire department stipulations, we will require them to sign off on as a stipulation if this is granted.
Um, yeah.
It's, it's just, uh, you know, those would be additional stipulations and they're pretty common, the, the Knox boxes and the FDC connections, so.
Yeah, though exactly, those items are, um, very similar to what we did on the college project and we had to open dialogue with the, you know, what, what fittings do they, does the city use for their hoses to our, you know, fire connection and placing of a Knox spot, so definitely we would coordinate that with them.
Okay, um, is that it, Zach? Is that all we have? Okay.
That's all I have, yep.
All right, Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Kendra and Kitty and Alan for that presentation, so we'll close that portion and we will, uh, move along, open to MRK Investment Grow Operations.
All right, let me get Ryan here. It's Ryan.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. And then I'm trying to get your whole crew here, Ryan, give me a second, Joe and Josh.
Oh, would, would you be able to let me, um?
Yeah, you can have calls, Ryan, give me one second, I'm just. There you go, sir. Should have it now.
All right, excellent. Um, for the sake of time, too, I think I'll, I'll kind of, uh, truncate things, um, for us to a- address a lot of concerns. And then on the call, I've got Joe Wright, uh, from the Spicer Group with me and that, uh, developed the, the site plans and, and can get into some of the specifics there and then, um, uh, our, our attorney, Josh Covert, that can help, uh, facilitate and, and kind of help everyone understand the licensing process, uh, for these legal cannabis entities within the state of Michigan. Um, I, I think there's probably some, uh, fundamental, um, uh, misunderstandings on, on, on how a grow operation, a licensed and legal grow operation within the, the state of Mi- uh, Michigan, uh, operates. And, and, and so I'm looking forward to, um, kind of addressing everyone's, um, uh, concerns, uh, as, as we go through this, this process. Um, uh, I, I, I think, um, one of the, the, the biggest things to understand, um, is that, um, why you're seeing almost forty states now legalize cannabis, either medically or, or recreationally, is to eliminate, uh, black market sales. So you've got dispensaries, um, that are providing a secure and safe environment, uh, for these to take place. Um, and, and then you've got grow and processing operations, uh, where the state of Michigan has set up legislation and, um, in order to provide, um, the framework, um, so that, uh, consumers get a safe, um, uh, organically produced, uh, product. And, uh, I'll go through some, some more of that, um, uh, as we, as we delve deeper into the presentation. Uh, and then I think maybe one of the other fundamental misunderstands, I know some, some of the, the concerns brought up, um, i- is, as far as, uh, interior design uh, and security, the, there's a couple others that, that the, um, the city has set up to get addressed, um, as we progress through the licensing process. Um, uh, and, and, uh, uh, my attorney, Josh Covert, can help on, on this too, but the, the SUP is just, you know, the initial process and then there's licensing within the municipality, um, and then that licensing is contingent on state approval and then after state approval, it comes back to the municipality, uh, to get final approver, uh, approval after all the, uh, steps have been taken. So, um, my partners and I, um, have, after the, the original ordinance was passed, oh, it's almo-, maybe almost a, a year and a half ago, um, within the, the city of Manistee, have, uh, been looking for a, a, a property, uh, that met, you know, all sorts of goals for us as far as, um, allowing medical and recreational, uh, cannabis to be grown and processed, um, uh, in, in not necessarily limiting the, the number of, uh, licenses, uh, so we can e- expand based on, um, my partner's eyes, the needs, um, on the dispensary side, um, so, um, I'm, I'm, uh, the current representative of MRK Investment Properties and, uh, Victorian, uh, reserves, um, but my partners and I also, um, have ownership and equity in, in numerous cannabis, uh, cannabis brands across the state and, and, uh, of Michigan as well. One seventy Glacheski was, uh, incredibly, uh, desirable to us, uh, because of, um, uh, how the city set up, uh, its ordinances and, uh, and, and what we would be able to do and provide, um, uh, my partners with, uh, Meds Cafe, uh, which will be a, a medical provisioning center, um, looking to open, um, later on this month at the, uh, seventy Arthur Street, uh, a- as long as, um, uh, as well as a number of other, uh, dispensaries, uh, within the state. In my last, uh, SUP presentation, um, I, I wanted everyone within the community to kind of get to know me a little bit better, uh, as, as the representative of the ownership group. Again, my name's, um, Ryan Fitzsimmons and, um, I, I own multiple properties within Manistee and currently, um, uh, my second residence is on St. Mary's. Um, it was a, a home my, uh, wife and I, as you can see in these pictures here, uh, purchased from my family, um, the, the property was used as a vacation property for me as a, as I was a young child, um, and, and we would come visit and, and stay in the summers. Um, and then, um, my beautiful wife allowed me, or, uh, uh, it, even said yes as I proposed her at the, the, the Vogue Theater and we were married, uh, just over five years ago, uh, at the courthouse in, uh, in, in Manistee. Um, and, and this goes into some of the, uh, the things I mentioned before as far as, um, uh, my background, uh, until, oh, a few years back, uh, was not actually in, in cannabis, um, and, and, and I think it's maybe important that, um, for a lot of residents to understand how, uh, a lot of my partners anyway, and a, and a lot of our, um, even competitors within the, the state of Michigan, uh, get into cannabis. Um, a- and this is where I really fully, uh, understand and respect everyone's concerns and considerations. I, I, I was one of those, um, people, uh, you know, a, a, a number of years ago, probably up till even six or seven years ago, um, where, um, you know, I, I, I'd stayed, uh, far away from cannabis and it wasn't until, uh, my mother, um, uh, had, uh, was diagnosed with breast cancer, uh, a number of years ago and, and, and last month in December, she's been five years, uh, cancer free. Um, and it was something that kind of opened my eyes, um, and where I delved into, um, you know, the medicinal properties, um, of cannabis and, um, and its overarching, uh, you know, positive effects on, on people in, in certain medical, um, situations. So my, my mother used it instead of, uh, the prescription drugs, um, to deal with pain and things like that, that, that caused her a lot of, uh, side effects and issues. Um, uh, you know, she had been the one to kind of step into this, um, this space and, and find ways to help address her, her appetite and, and pain and things while dealing with, uh, those treatments. Um, all of our, uh, all of my partners, um, in, in this venture, um, I think it's important to know that, um, we're all operators, uh, of cannabis in, in good standing, there's no, um, pass through tax lanes, uh, you know, w- we, uh, we actually go out of our way, um, to make sure that we give back to the communities in which we operate in. And, uh, with our brand Meds Cafe, um, uh, we recently donated, um, um, a boat to the, the city of Lowell, where we, um, have been operating, uh, un- until recently, the only recreational, um, cannabis dispensary, um, in Kent County in the greater Grand Rapids area, uh, for the past eight months, uh, and, and, and so that's one of our, um, projects there. Um, for me, it's, it's in- incredibly important to, to educate residents, uh, within the, the communities that we work in and, and for them to know that, that we want to be good community partners. Um, there's a, there's a huge, uh, stigma with cannabis, um, over years that, that we're looking to kind of break down and, and, um, and hopefully, uh, this presentation today is, is one of those first steps where, um, uh, some information for, uh, from my partners and I, uh, I would say professionals in the, in the industry can, can provide others, uh, to ease some of these concerns. Uh, in my, uh, public letter, um, I'll just touch on a, a, a couple of the things that are really important to us and we can make reference back to it. But we're really interested in creating local jobs, uh, with livable wages, um, and because of our backgrounds, um, side of cannabis, uh, partners, we, we're also looking to get into other, um, projects and businesses in the area because we want to provide, uh, affordable housing. You know, um, for a lot of times, um, in, potentially the, this property could have up to, uh, depending on the, the phase, um, you know, you're looking from twenty to thirty to forty and even fifty employees, uh, young professionals often, uh, that, that do need housing as well. We currently utilize safety compliance and, and testing facilities, uh, we have secured, uh, baking relationships and secure transports, uh, within the, the state of Michigan. And, uh, and we currently utilize in our, our facilities, um, I'm actually sitting in one right now, I borrowed a, a manager's office in our, um, uh, dispensary down in, uh, Lowell, just outside of, uh, Grand Rapids, um, where we use the latest in physical and cybersecurity to provide a safe environment uh, for employees, patrons and, uh, and neighbors in the community. I recently, um, after submitting my narrative to the city, um, I, I did go ahead and, 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 uh, send out, um, a mail or a postcard that I'll demonstrate as well, uh, a little bit later on, uh, but because of COVID delays, um, through USPS and the other courier uh, that we used, uh, I'm not sure if everyone, uh, has been receiving in a, in a timely fashion, but, um, I'm willing to work with, um, with, with Mike, um, to get this distributed to anybody else, um, in the area, uh, that would need it and also to give out my, um, personal contact information and to be reached, uh, to address additional concerns, uh, and things, and Mike, I don't know if that's the best or most appropriate way uh, to do it, maybe you have, uh, some other ideas where I can provide, um, that. So we, uh, maybe we can address that at the, at the end as well.
Yeah, we can address that, uh, offline, let's, and then, um, just go ahead.
Yeah, uh, and then I'm, I'm also willing, um, uh, as I said in the, um, uh, the, the postcard that was sent out, uh, a- as well, um, we could hold a, 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 a meeting as, um, we start to progress, uh, along the, the licensing path that the city has, uh, set out for us, um, a, a meeting onsite, um, e- especially those residents at, at Dunes Drive or a- anyone, uh, uh, close to the facility so they can really understand and, and, and maybe meet me onsite and I can kind of walk them through, um, you, you know, our, our, our process and, and, and what things will look like in the future. See, I can skip, oops. My mouse just died. Sorry. Mike, are you able to admit the, I keep getting this, um, the presentation is locked because someone's trying to get admitted into the room? Um, oh, so this is probably the, uh, for me, the, one of two parts that's, that's really important and, and I can address that. Sounds that.
Hello? Hello, sir?
Yeah.
Hello? Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
You may comment about anyone that would care to do a walkthrough, you would be willing to show them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would volunteer for that walkthrough.
What?
I would volunteer for the walkthrough that you're talking about.
Okay, great.
Just let me know when.
You ready?
Yes.
Um, uh, see if I can adjust this. Oh, there we go.
Thank you, Mike.
Awesome, um, uh, so one of the, the, the biggest issues, um, uh, or perceived, um, some of the, um, the, the points that were referenced i- in the letters early on, I think we have the understanding, um, a, a lot of times as, um, uh, my partners or I present in, uh, in, in a similar structure to this. But I wanted to be really clear that everyone understands that, uh, the city of Manistee, the state of Michigan has already, um, provided, um, things within the process. Uh, limit, um, uh, orders, um, within the, these facilities and I, and I think once I kind of get through this explanation, everyone will kind of understand why, um, why for me and, and why the dozens of grow facilities that are currently operating within the state of Michigan aren't having these issues um, within the municipalities that the, that, that they operate in and a lot of the, um, examples that were used were outside of the state and, and I would dare say without further investigating that a lot of those may not have been, um, state licensed, uh, i- i- in the manner that, that Michigan has kind of gone through. So for air quality, uh, control, the, the construction of our rooms, um, so for instance, um, within the existing building or, or the new, the, in the phase one, the first ten thousand square foot building, the rooms where the, the, uh, the, the plants are grown within our, our small rooms developed, uh, they're self-contained mini environments within the larger structure and they do not exchange, uh, inside air with that outside air and, and that's within the, the, the larger structure. So I, I would liken the, the, the rooms, the, the grow rooms to be like sealed boxes inside of a larger box, um, in the constructed area holding the grow rooms. Uh, the rooms, uh, are supplemented with necessary CO2 that the plants need to survive and the CO2 derived, uh, inside the rooms, these rooms are literally sealed, uh, airtight. Um, and, and, uh, and the reason for this and, and this, uh, uh, for me, I, I thought was really important, the state of Michigan, the, the state of Michigan has the strictest, um, testing in, in compliance, um, of any state that has legalized cannabis to, to date as far as we test for over sixty different contaminants. Um, so everything is, uh, organically grown, there's no pesticides, there's no, um, and everything at this facility is obviously, um, grown indoors, there, there's, um, we want it little, uh, to know, um, contaminants to be able to be shared between these environments, um, and, uh, okay, I'll continue to this, the, the, the only time the rooms, um, exchange air and this is with those small subset rooms, with the larger rooms, uh, would be for the brief entry and exit into the, the smaller self-contained rooms. Um, human activity, uh, needs to be quick to prevent any change in the dynamics of that, uh, internal micro, um, environment. Um, a- and as I mentioned too, the, the testing is incredibly, um, uh, stringent, uh, within the, the state of Michigan and, um, and, and this, and holding to these standards are of incredible importance to us because we don't want to risk, uh, you know, uh, millions of dollars in lost harvest or, or hundreds of thousands of dollars of losing multiple rooms. Um, uh, in addition to the sealed grow rooms, surrounding hallways, general office areas, including restaurants outside the growers, uh, will be filtered, uh, for, uh, zero smell emission. The complimentary, uh, uh, use, uh, uh, of no HVAC air exchange, um, from the outside of the building to the inside of the building, um, highly qual- um, quality charcoal filtration on, um, any, any sort of exhaust within the, the sub rooms within the larger facility and, uh, technology like ozone is utilized in our grow facilities to accomplish, uh, this mandate. Uh, 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 another concern too is, uh, is our use of, um, uh, water, uh, and, and, and wastewater and, um, so this was put together by our, um, chief, uh, agricultural officer and, um, uh, the standards of our water usage and wastewater. The standards of our water usage and wastewater is aligned with our organizational environment, environmental core values. We understand and will strive to create thresholds that will exceed the municipal standards that are always set forth. And and we and and I think most of the licensed business within the state of Michigan focus on recycling and minimizing water usage. Obviously for cost and but industrial wastewater is typically full of contaminants and toxic matter. Which is not applicable with our cultivation demands because of these testing limitations. Instead of avoiding nitrates into sewage systems, it's fairly simple thing to accomplish because no pollutants or non-organic substances. Will be used in our facility because we would fail testing and we would not be able to push product into the the market. A simple summary of how this is achieved in these four bullet points. One will have nutrient-specific recapture, recapturing systems, essentially trays below the 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 plants. That will eliminate TBS, pH and salts from ever being discharged. And and then these systems recapture filter and then clean our internal wastewater. That cleaned water can then be reused within our facility. Large volumes and then our growing methodology places an emphasis on minimize. Well, water issue and minimal overall discharge by comparison to a a standard growth facility by fifty to eighty percent. Reverse osmosis and evaporation equipment will leave us with a final batch of more concentrated waste that can then be trucked away for safe disposal. So this was the 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 postcard. That hopefully is is arriving in mailboxes and. The USP has said that they are experiencing at least a two week delay in that in this service. But broke down again kind of some of the main points. From the the public letter, the the narrative and then. My slow follow, my wife and I and a little background about us and in our experience with with Manistee and our participation in in the city over. Years. We actually have a presentation that is linked to that postcard by by scanning the QR code. And this now that. Cannabis is operating across the country, more and more data is coming in and so concerns. On the communities that they operate in, you'll find and we don't have to go through all the the details now. That everyone can get access to this presentation too, but we're finding that that crime rates, you know, essentially stay the same. Or there's a slight reduction because of how secure these buildings are based on the demands from the the state. And the municipalities that they they operate in and then that the kind of communication in the 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 framework that happens locally. To make sure that, you know, the black market transactions that have been going on. For years and years and years are are now taken and put into this. Highly regulated, safe and secure environment that's that's set forth by the city's ordinances. And then the the legislation passed by the state of Michigan. So some things that touches on, we we touched on the crime, we touched on the the economics behind these businesses and and their impacts on it. And how. Having state licensed businesses reduce the the risk adolescents to come across cannabis. There's a lot of research now on cannabis helping to not only treat things like PTSD. But you people can reduce their dependence on opioids. And so there'd be a a number of important things I think that that concern the citizens could delve into here. Through that 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 mailer. And through those QR codes.
And Ryan, I do have a question for you. With the with the waste disposal and safe disposal areas. Where is the nearest safe disposal area to this grow facility?
That is a that's a really good question and that that's not my line of expertise. And I I don't I don't know if Josh, our attorney, could do that. It's probably a question for our chief agricultural officer.
It's not, this isn't something that is in turn dumped into like the city landfill or anything.
Oh, no, no, the 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 state has certain requirements that we use secure transport and then we use certain. State licensed or state recommended, state approved businesses to deal with this sort of.
Right, so with your with your final water product, what is your discharge as far as. You have clean water that you guys clean onsite and then dispose of your your concentrated. Contaminated soils, but as far as. Water that's discharged back into the, you know, the municipal supply or into the sewage system. Is there any contaminants in that in that water?
No, and 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 actually to to my knowledge and without having the HVAC specialist or again that that we're not discharging. That we're either reusing it or it's it's disposed of. Through the state license means, which is not through the municipality, you know, other than your typical, you know. Water, restrooms, et cetera, et cetera, any anything on the 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 gross side is dealt with completely separately.
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
Hi, Ryan. This is Mick Schumansky. I I've got a a couple and again, I understand you're really not the expert. But what kind of volume are we talking about as far as the the waste disposal? Is it is it tanker cars full? Is it? Just just to give me an idea of volume. I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Oh, okay, let me see it like. No, no, and in in fact, and and this will be important for residents to know too, we don't have semis to make deliveries. Deliveries and things are all done in small cargo vans and things like that and and the waste that you're producing, you know, would would never even. Till a cargo van over, you know, over a harvest, you know.
Ryan, what what size grow are you guys? Are you guys, what size grow would this be your your first phase form?
So phase phase one, so initially we would seek one class C recreational grow license. And and there would be more than enough plants for the existing building and part of the using the existing building is to transition into the new. It just didn't make sense, you know, as far as our timeline goes, breaking ground and to develop that new ten thousand square foot building will will take a number of months. But in the meanwhile, you're kind of setting up and and having clones ready, you know, to shift into the the larger facility. About two thousand plants. That would be used within the existing building. And and the new first ten thousand square foot building and and then, you know, we're looking to grow it. At a manageable rate, so before even expanding into to phase two. Were able to. Double stack LEDs and 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 so this also probably addresses a couple of concerns too. We have checked the 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 city and consumers and if we had, you know, up to fifty thousand. Square foot of canopy and if we doubled it by double stacking LED lights to grow, there's more than enough power available. However, in our growth growth facilities, eighty percent of the lights are LED lights. So you reduce heat, which makes makes for much greater plant health. And and then the the plants produce more, but you're also not having to then have incredible incredibly huge HVAC costs. To take heat out of lights or not, you know, creating that that heat from the out.
Now, while we approve, you know, land use here, there's additional requirements through the city that you have to go through. Could you could you speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah.
Because while while our zoning requirements, we we do talk about odor noise and and other controls. The city as part of their licensing and business registration have have quite a bit more. That they kind of hold you to and can you speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, and then Josh, if you don't mind, if I. Essentially, phase one is, yes, they have seen the the SUP and then within phase two. It's all architectural work where we get to dive in and you get to see the internals. And and handling the structure from security, you know, to everything else and and this is pretty, the 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 process that the city has put in place. Is is very similar to the other municipalities that we operate in and the demands that the state and a lot of time they're they're mirroring. Each other, so a lot of this gets addressed, you know, before we even get to move on in in the process. So in addressing odor control happens in in the next phases is is after we obtain an SUP. Potentially, then in that city licensing process, you know, everyone's looking into how, again. And this is the time to really dive into how we're dealing with wastewater, how we're dealing with security, how we're dealing. With any sort of. Internals on the on the facility. There was more specific questions. I know Josh would be willing to hit those stronger, but. So this is just the very early stages of us looking to operate in.
Before we jump to you, Sean, I think Roger had a question.
Roger, hold on, I apologize.
Yes, this is Roger, the gentleman that is going to do the walkthrough with you, Mr. Simmons. My question is, when it leaves your facility, what level is it at? Are you sending it to your dispensaries to be sold on the market or is it dried and cured? And everything that has to be processed or what?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Hey, Ryan, you are breaking up.
Okay, I I think that I get some static maybe from Roger sometimes or some feedback or something. Okay. So the 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 process and for us is that that we grow within the the facility. And 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 then depending on the needs of our dispensaries, we produce different cannabinoids. That can be sold within the. Within our dispensaries, but we will also be selling to other dispensaries and supporting other. Somebody even consider competitors within within the the state market from our our dispensaries. So how it's set up. So early on, the the plant, the process, at the end of their growth cycle and as as they're they're harvested. They're sent in for testing before, so using state of Michigan secure transport. And and this is probably also important for everybody to know, as an as an operator, so. Because I have ownership in a grow processor and dispensary, I cannot have anything to do. With compliance or testing or transportation within the state of Michigan, so these are completely separate entities. So then we have a separate entity that's also state licensed. Then take that that flower, that product and then take it to a that transport, take it to a secured testing facility. Where we get those results and and if the results initially anyway, if the results then go your way, then they destroyed your product. But now there's a few different, there's some remediation that that can be done to product and that product can then be pushed and. Processed out and 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 still utilizing in a safe manner as the state sees fit. Roger.
Hey, Ryan, this is. Ryan, this is Mick Schumansky. Can you hear me? Go ahead, Roger, go ahead.
Well, I have one more question in regards to these facility then. You grow to the point of what, six feet or five feet and you dry it and everything else? And then you turn it into oil if possible?
Yeah, yeah, as as far as the the height of the plant goes, it's incredibly based on the. Growing that. That is that is being done in the facility and and typically when you're using LED lights, you're growing more horizontally horizontally than you are vertically. Which then allows you to stack multiple layers and and so your growth. It is a little different than than you described, but yeah, so the the growing happens. It goes through a a phase where it it's dried and then it's tested and and you can put the then the flowers in into the. The flower into dispensaries or depending on the mix and the need as far as consumers go for us, then we decide. And set a percentage of our yield aside to then be processed into edibles, vape cartridges. You know, and many other products that are available in in the state licensed dispensaries. Yeah. Oh, I think Roger's trying to get me again.
Mick, you had a question?
Yeah, Ryan, you know, again, as as you may have listened in. The biggest concern, I think, to our community is. The smell and the the appearance of your buildings. And since you've done this before and again, as you you just relayed to us. You have, you know, basically your facilities are have no smells, basically. They're odor free from the outside and and if and if I understand the requirements. They're 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 pretty much invisible as far as they're just a building, that building that it. What it looks like today will not change other than perhaps some security features like fencing and things like that. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, you're you're correct.
So so.
All right, go ahead.
So so what I was saying is, you know, since you've done this before. It may be helpful to have some testimonials from neighbors and residents. In areas that you already are present in in Michigan. So that, you know, we're not the test case, but but actually you can actually substantiate this. That says, hey, you know, look, we've been operating here for the last year or so and here is our customer complaints, zero. Because we we create no smells, we are invisible and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Yep, no, and and I think that that can definitely help and and I think a part of it for me. Too is that that we're not the the first to be doing this whether across the country or the state of Michigan. And and the concerns that are expressed today are are not unique to me or not unique to the other operators. Those in in the business and 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 again, there's 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 dozens of these operating in in the same manner within. These communities and and by us following the ordinances within the municipality and in the state. You know, we we are required to to mitigate orders, why I I use that terminology, but but for us, it's even more important. And in within our. Process, I think we go above and beyond. Our facilities don't have any outside smell, not not every grow facility, although the vast majority of them do. Grow in a way that you have, you know, smaller rooms subset into into larger rooms. That that are completely sealed off for the reason that I mentioned before. But yeah.
So so you know, again, just as historically, you know, smell is something that that Manistee has has a history of. Okay, we used to have factories that produced smell.
Yeah.
In in large quantities and and we we got rid of that and we don't want it again. So I think that's why, you know, citizens that have been here a while, you know, want to make sure that if we're going to have any kind of an industry. It it isn't going to be one that you can smell and before you can see it.
For sure. Yeah, yeah, and and we're, we feel the same way about it and we feel the same way because it's it's also a security. Concern, you know, nothing says like, hey, you know, potentially there's millions of dollars of. Flower located in this facility and our goal aesthetically is to blend into any of the. You know, zone districts that were allowed to operate and I I don't want my buildings to look any different than what's currently going on with the eight or nine buildings. That are in the light industrial district.
Yeah.
No, I want to follow the, the, the same, uh, the, the standards and things that, that they go by and even take. More caution i- in, into how we operate because, uh, you know, we are very concerned. Uh, about the same things that I think, um, that the residents have been putting forth today.
Why don't you go ahead, shall we?
Uh, I, I just have a quick one. Uh, Ryan, you said. Correct me if I heard you incorrectly, that you, you have a current operation that is similar to this in Lowell?
Um, oh, so this is, uh, that's not a grow operation that I, that I mentioned today. That's one of our dispensaries. But we, we do have partner grows and we're currently, um, uh, COVID delayed some things for us, but. Currently we're building out three grow facilities, um, that, right now. This is, um, in. Potentially in the long, the economics will kind of determine it. Um, but would, um, be a larger provider, uh, for our West Michigan, uh, uh, locations. And, and, and why we've set the plan in phases is, is to say, uh, you know, us to initially, uh, in, invest. You know, um, just use rough numbers now, twenty million dollars to completely build everything out. May, that makes sense because we have. Three facility, three dispensaries within West Michigan that, that we're trying to provide for. So. That's kind of why you, you'll, you'll, you'll see that structure there.
I'm curious if you might know how many of those grow operations are either located in residential neighborhoods or adjacent to them?
Um, uh, they're never located within a, a residential neighborhood, um, but it, but it is quite common that. You know, cities have laid out districts, um, uh, that, uh, are, are adjacent to. Uh, residential neighborhoods. Uh, so this is, uh, you, uh, unique as far as, um, what others are dealing with within the, the state of Michigan. Uh, and it's, and it's why, uh, other municipalities, uh, we, uh, are, are also so concerned about odor and why that's kind of. Um, built in, uh, to the legislation from the state and built into these ordinances as we follow the process.
Thank you.
All right, Bob, I, I know you've been itching, Bob, so. Before, before I let you go, Bob, I know there's, there's individuals, I know Mark can't see him, but people have raised their hands. Until, uh, you, we won't be able to speak until public comment and, um, I know. That's frustrating, but, uh, that is the way that these meetings work. So, Bob, with that said, please, please go ahead.
Okay. This has gone toward your proposed new buildings. Uh, I know that you're gonna use the existing building that's there now. What is your pri- I know you're gonna build one ten thousand square foot buildings. What's the approximate height of those buildings gonna be?
Uh, ru- roughly thirty feet at the, um, is, i- i- at the, at their height. Uh, but that, but again, this will get further addressed in the, in the next phase of the, the, the licensing. Um, but, um, yeah, roughly about thirty feet. So that allows a double stack or potentially triple. Stack those, those.
So we're looking basically at the same height of the building that's there now, which is around that time frame. And so that makes your sight lines pretty decent. For any place else, it'd be no worse than the other factories that are in this park now at all. Really, you won't even notice that. From anywhere else, really.
And I think we, uh, uh, our intention was to kind of go above and beyond and, 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 and work with the city and, and. You know, the exit, uh, excavation of the site, um, uh, and, and the landscaping will be done so to, you know. Further protect and further shield, you know, that, that line of sight into the area because for security wise, that's, that's great for us too, but it's also beneficial to, to, you know, to residents. When, anytime you have, you know, whether it be a cannabis, uh, business or another business that, that were to come into this parcel. Um, you know, y- you do want that separation from the, the homes on, uh, Dunes Drive or, you know, or any other.
Yeah, you aren't kind of, you're gonna be in kind of more of a depressed area in the park right there. So you're already, you're gonna be lower than. Other parts of the industrial park. So that, that works in your favor on that.
Ryan, how many jobs are being, uh, created if this grow operation was approved? And what is the starting wages? I know if I don't ask that, Mark will get all over me, so.
I was gonna ask that also, Mike, so.
So, um. So the, uh, so it, I'll give you some general numbers, I guess, maybe in the, the different phases. You're talking somewhere between, um, in the existing building, sorry, about six to ten, um. Employees, um, because it, the growing there would be, you know, quite minimal. I think there's probably only about. Uh, two thousand square feet that would be used within that, you know, fifty, seven hundred. And, a- and then it's really limited processing that would take place at, uh, you know, up to that point. Uh, as you move into adding that second, or sorry, that, I call it the second building, but the first new building. Um, you know, you're expanding from six to ten to up to, uh, twenty, um. Twenty four employees and then, you know, processing becomes a bigger role. And then you would kind of see that natural, uh, increase. Uh, with each building as you add in. So, you know, with the, the second building, you know, potentially, uh, another additional between sixteen to. Uh, twenty four employees and then i- if, um. Uh, phase three were to, uh, w- were to go off, you know, uh, those numbers increase even, even further. Um, and as far as the wages go, um, there, there is, uh, um. There's more demand than there's supply of, uh, uh, people that are able to grow cannabis in a commercial setting. Uh, and follow the standards, uh, set forth in the state. So, so we compensate quite. Uh, quite well. Um, you know, uh, I, I don't think there's, uh, e- even your employees that are. You know, doing more simple task and maintenance with, within the facility, um, are at a livable wage and are easily above, uh, fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, and I think that would be way too low, um. Uh, for, for the sort of, uh, you know, work that's getting done there.
Ryan. Ryan, was, did you say, um, how much?
Oh, and a minute, I think, uh, fifteen dollars an hour is, uh, and that's somebody on the lowest part of the, the totem pole. And I don't even know if that's accurate. I think, I think we're kind of forced to pay more than that. Um, uh, uh, currently, so, uh, every, everyone tends to be, uh, pretty well compensated in this because there's, there, there's not. Uh, enough people with the expertise, um, you know, to do it that, that currently reside. You know, uh, within the state or within the municipalities that we like to operate in.
Ryan, I have one last question. When do you think you're gonna have your cafe, uh, open and operating?
Uh, so this is the exciting part, uh, for me anyway, because it's taken a while. Um, so Med Cafe, the, 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 the medical dispensary. And we are just waiting on our inspection for our, uh, certificate of occupancy. We receive that and we're hoping that's early next week because the contractors are finishing up, uh, some loose ends over the weekend. Uh, and then we turn in our C O O to the state. Uh, we've already been, uh, uh, pre-approved and turned everything in and our only deficiency is to have that. Certificate of occupancy. So when we, uh, provide that to them, which, which I hope is Monday, which the contractors will probably tell me it's Wednesday. By the time the inspector get out there, then, then we'll submit that to the state and then, uh, it just depends on the, the, uh, the final state inspection. For the state to come out. Uh, there, there's some other inspections that, that, that take place during, during that time, but the, the final state inspection would be the last. Uh, to occur. And typically the state is, um, uh, for us anyway, has been about seven days out once we produce all the documents that, uh, that they need. Um, and for us to get in there. Uh, sometimes COVID plays a, a part in that where that stretches out a, a little bit further. And because of the holidays, there might be a backlog, so it might be, uh, another week. Pushing everyone.
So February, i- if February would be a reasonable assumption?
Yeah, uh, February would, um, yeah, February is, is for sure. If we're not opening February, I'd be really disappointed. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm hoping, um, that, uh, these final. Steps can take place over the next, um, week to, to two weeks. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Pam, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if Ryan was the, the, the initial six to ten employees, is he looking for local help or would he be bringing in those employees?
So, um. So I'll give you a little, uh, structure. So, uh, we've already identified, uh, two locals that have, uh, commercial grow experience. Uh, which I was incredibly happy about because that does not always happen in the municipalities that we, that we look to go in. And then, and then we look to supplement that. We, we have. I, I've mentioned him a couple of times, a, a, a chief agriculture off, uh, officer that oversees all of our canopy across the, the state. Um, and then he, uh, he gets to work remotely, uh, through, um, a, a lot of great technology. Uh, so from his phone, from his laptop, he's constantly evaluating plant nutrients, uh, among a myriad of other. Thing. Uh, and then we'll have a, um. Essentially like a grow manager onsite that someone that, that is, um, has a high level, uh, of experience of, um. Managing a grow of this size. There, there was a lot of, um, uh, caregivers into the market. Um, I don't know if everyone, how everyone, uh, how familiar everyone was with how the, the state of Michigan kind of progressed. Um, but caregivers before, we have these larger, um, uh, state licensed facilities, uh, you know, have, were able to. Seventy two plants in, in smaller facilities. Um, so we, we try to use, um, a, a number of those guys. Uh, and then typically we're, we're bringing in, uh, one or two experts that have dealt with the facility. Um, that's greater than, um, you know, three, four thousand square feet and, and, and up to, um. Uh, you know, managing facilities that are forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand, um, square feet.
So, to follow up on that question, do you do any, um. Growing your own employees in these facilities and other hiring people with li- limited experience and then training them?
Yeah, that's an important part, uh, because like I said, um, that, there's not enough supply of, uh, qualified and, and employees, especially on the, the, the grow and processing side of the, the business. Um, so finding willing to enable, um. Then, yeah, that, that are willing to grow and develop under more experienced, the, uh, leadership is, uh, is key to us. And. And so probably out of those, those six, there's, uh, you're probably looking at luckily two people that have some commercial growth experience that we've identified already. Um, and, and then two more that would be lower on the, the totem pole that are doing a lot of, uh, tasks that aren't, you know. Super enjoyable that, you know, um, entail, you know, watering and all. All sorts of things. And then, and then we've got guys that, that we bring in that, that we know, um. Will make sure that we don't have a, a failed harvest where, you know, where we're costing the business, uh, a lot.
So not unlike a restaurant where you're gonna hire people as a dishwasher and if they work out, then you make them, you know. Move up and, and learn more as they progress.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, um, something is really, um, uh, the, the, the trend in cannabis in, in the long term. Cannabis growth i- isn't going to be much different than any other agricultural business, whether I'm growing tomatoes, whether I'm growing. Uh, a, a lot of those things that are done in a commercial scale. When you're growing other products are, are, are now being utilized more readily in, in, in cannabis and a- as they should be. Um, much healthier approach. Um, so yeah, yeah, education is, is incredibly, um.
But, but you also have a, a customer service aspect and, uh, a retail. Side too, that you have to have experience, knowledge and, and the right personalities because you're gonna be dealing with the public as well.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, um, so the, the store I'm sitting in, uh, today. Uh, Lowell was, um, again, um, it was the only recreational shop in, in Kent County for at least six months. Um, from March of this past year, um. Uh, until recently and, and, and just in this store alone, I, I, I think we've kind of varied between fifty and fifty six employees. Uh, and you, you know, eighty or ninety percent of them are, are, are. Or, or, you know, the close, uh, surrounding communities. And, um, uh, and, and so we actually just have. Other than, uh, the manager, uh, or a handful of managers out of those, you know, fifty some in, uh, employees. So about five or six of them had a high level of experience in cannabis and, uh, it, all the other employees are, are pretty new. To these state licensed dispensaries. So, so we take a lot of time making sure that we're educating, um, you know, our employees and developing in a way that, uh, as we expand, uh, you know, we're identifying those. Employees that can get that and put into managerial roles. And, and that's the same on the, the grow and processing side as well.
Um, I don't know if Marlene is with us. Did you get her back, Mike?
I haven't, uh, seen her number come up as, as a, uh, yeah.
I noticed somebody else dropped off, so, okay. All right.
We do, we do have Mark some, some recommendations from our, our department. Um, and then if, if you guys are ready for those, then we'll read them and.
I, I just have a couple of questions, Mike. Onto the recommendations. Our, Ryan, uh, the hours of operation, are you gonna run twenty-four hours a day or how, how are you doing this?
No, it's, it's more likely that it's, um, uh, most of the work i- i- uh, the day starting off, um. At seven A M. And by eight A M., um, the employees are reporting data numbers, um, you know, to our, uh, managers that are overseeing. Our entire canopy, uh, uh, across the state. Um, but you would run maybe two shifts. Uh, there's actually quite a bit of an overlap. Um, it, it's not typically run, um. Twenty-four hours, unless there is some great demand, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't. Reduce our time to harvest at all by, by running twenty-four hours a day. And, and a lot of, uh, this is done remotely. Typically there, there is some security staff that. It depends on the municipality and, and where we're at, where, you know, someone like that may be at the facility.
Running, running two shifts, they, you would probably be done at midnight?
Yeah, and actually, and actually I think, um, uh, in a lot of facilities. Most everyone has gone home, um, you know, for dinner or late dinner by, by six to eight. There, there, there's not many that, um. You know, uh, are staying beyond that. And, and, and we would make it so, uh, you know. So you're not, uh, there's not a high amount of traffic that, that, that's coming into this, uh, facility and certainly. Um, not at hours that differ from any other operating business in the area, uh, because that also, you know, draws attention to the business and. What's going on and. Done remotely, you know, throughout, um, those later hours.
Well, the, you offered the walkthrough, so I, I would be interested in, in doing that also, along with Roger. I don't know if anybody else on the commission would like to do that?
Uh, I would.
I'd like to.
Mick and Bob, okay?
I'm as well.
Yeah, I'd like to go too, Mark.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, we got the whole band.
And, and then, uh, we could do a tour and then I could all, uh, and then if there's, there's also residents to do that, and so we could, you know, we could do a, a, a separate tour of the facility as we start to go through the process.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, uh, uh, the planning commission cannot go as a whole. Uh, or have a quorum, or they have to make that a, a public meeting, so.
So we end up going in shifts.
Yeah, yeah.
The lighting effect on the neighborhood, I know that's a big thing with, with Dunes Drive. Uh, how are you gonna combat that?
So there, there isn't gonna be any lighting that's a- any different, you know, as far as, you know, w- w- we want some, uh, lighting for parking, uh, and things like that, just like the other businesses do. Uh, for safety and, and security. Um, but. We're willing to take, you know, whatever steps necessary to make sure that that isn't causing an issue for, for residents nearby. The facility itself, as far as lights, uh, you know, uh, obviously within the facility, there, you know. There's no light seen from, uh, from inside every, uh, you know, everything is completely sealed. You're talking rooms within, uh, rooms. Um, so, uh, on, on the exterior, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be any different than, than the current, uh, businesses operate.
So on the, on the exterior, uh, there's, there, there will not be any windows or there will be?
Um, typically, um, there, there are not windows unless, unless it's put into, you know, the, the part of the, um, the, the offices. But the, the least amount of, uh. Entrances and exits, uh, available to us make, make things for security, uh, a lot better. Uh, and then we don't want, uh, light to be affecting the, you know, uh, plants, uh. In any way that they're, they're shown. Again, you're, you're, you're trying to really set up those. Small like subclimates within a building and, and each of the strains that you're growing within a room have different. And demands, um, and, and you don't want any crossover, um, because you're gonna really, um, for plant health.
And one thing we had on there, Mark, was the plans had lights on the plans as well as what types of lights are they being used?
Yeah.
Um, but one of the recommendations that we had was. Are there already full cutoff fixtures? Um, but one thing we did was we requested, um, as, as part of one of the, if you, when you, if you make a motion to approve that. Um, one of the stipulations be that they provide a lumen plan. Um, or photometric plan that shows that none of the light is leaving the property, which is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. Um, there is one light on the west side we were concerned about, um, with speaking to Ryan, uh, you know. You know, they had said that they'd meet the zoning ordinance requirement. And we, you know, that was just one of the stipulations we'd like to see, you know, as if any approval is given that they they not only, they just provide us with that lumen plan demonstrating that there's no light bleed to the, any other parcels and it's all contained within their own. So that can be done through directional, you know, full cutoff lighting that directs it towards their parcel. As away from over, it's also good for light pollution. That's been a concern. And, you know, it's already part of the ordinance. So we we just would like to see that as any kind of, you know, stipulation is to granting it, so.
Okay, alright.
I can speak to that if I could, if I could jump in for just a minute.
Yeah, Joe, I gave you a co-host, right? So if you wanna, we can give, take it away from Ryan and we can have you share your screen and then you can show the plans and there are a couple of things that we can go through as well on that.
Yeah, let me see here. I think this is the site plan. I've got them all opened up, but the titles aren't showing. I just want to back up and talk about the the lighting plan quickly. We we did prepare a lumen plan and then Ryan and I had to make some changes to the site. So since it wasn't required as part of the original submittal, we didn't redo it. But the only, I mean, the change we made, there was actually was an extra building where this parking lot was and we took that out. That lumen plan met the requirement. There was no spill lighting at the at the edge of the property. It was below one foot candle throughout. Our electrical engineer actually changed some of the the site lights on poles to wall packs to to minimize the light on the perimeter of the site. But and then we have extensive landscape screening, which if I get a moment, I'd like to ask some questions about that as well, too.
Right, we had actually, that was another stipulation that we we made on it was while there's a fencing around there, we'd like to see a green space buffer around the that berm side, the west side and the south side of the property. There is really strict requirements in the zoning ordinance for any green space buffer. And it's, you know, it comes with that, you know, you have to replace trees if they go down, those types of things. But also like, you know, some money deposited to the city in case those, in case you, you know, don't make the changes, you know, it's it's constantly on file that then they they basically take money out of. It is, we have it as some of our recommendations and we would have read those, but it sounds like we're addressing it now, so.
It's section five three one of the zoning ordinance.
Is that something that's new? Because when I look around this industrial park, there is no other building that was required to screen it the way that we were.
Well, with the residential, like the residential area to the the west and to the south, we feel it's a requirement and should be be added in there. You guys have already put certain trees and and areas in there that you've been with a landscape plan that we've noticed. But we would allow, we would like to see that green space buffer requirement met. And I mean, if we if we read it off, it's not, it's not overly more than what you guys have. It's just something that, you know, we would like to see. I think the residents on Dunes Drive would like to see it. And it's just screening from that in addition to the fencing.
Are you going to want those trees on the east side of that eleven foot berm where they can't be seen or do you want them up on the berm off the property?
Well, is the berm, I believe it's on city property, isn't it?
Because there's an eleven foot berm that separates this site from drive.
I can't give you permission to, as zoning administrator, to put it on city property.
You see what I'm getting at, right?
But at the same token, on the south side, there isn't a berm.
South side, yeah.
And then the green space, I think, you know, when those trees trees do mature, I realize it's an eleven foot, but it will still provide some coverage. While I understand that, you know, there's hesitation because it is a depressed area. I think with a lot of, you know, what the residents have expressed concern on, it's appropriate. But now it's just a recommendation for us if the if the planning commission does not agree with us and they don't agree with us, so.
I guess, I mean, I I don't, I wasn't going to spend too much time, you know, arguing about trees. But Ryan and I did discuss and again, if you look at what's out there already, and we've already, we've already established the fact that his industrial building is going to look a lot like every other industrial building there. There's no other building that is screened this way. And and if if the buildings are apples to apples, I guess I was just curious as to why they're being, you know, held to a different standard.
Well, I could say that, you know, the planning department was not involved in those other placement of those buildings.
Joe, and if I can, when the industrial park first came, you didn't have the housing that was on the lake shore. That property developed a little bit later, so. Yeah, so part of that is.
No, but I did also work in there and it's within the three years span of itself. The industrial park came in, three years later, Dunes Drive came in, so they're all with the same pin, but they were all sand dunes. There was nothing there, so there was nothing for things involved there at all.
So so part of it is just a courtesy to to the neighbors to the west that we're looking for. And and again, just to make our industrial park as invisible as possible to our neighbors to the west of that property.
Well, I hope you understand why I asked the question.
Sure, no, no, I, yeah, absolutely.
And 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 the, you know, the difference in the the start of the industrial park and the housing, you know, sheds a little bit of light on it.
Yeah, those people that came in there on Dunes Drive, they knew they were buying right next to an industrial park, so they had to eventually know something's coming in.
Yeah, but at the time, there was nothing there, so.
It's, it was long planted before the others, so.
And it's it's pretty common to see a a green space buffer from an industrial park next to a residential area. It's pretty common, right?
I get it. Like I said, I was just, I was looking at our our requirements compared to what's there now. And I was just trying to determine the the difference. But I get it. I mean, I bought a house next to a a guy who owns a bunch of sand and gravel pits in the area. I was gonna hear a backup beeper in my backyard. Anyway. So so I've got the site plan up. I don't know how, if my screen's being shared.
Joe, it's right at the bottom. There's a share screen green button on the very middle of the screen. If you'll click on that, it should come up. Is it up?
Yeah, I see. There, sorry, I use Teams a lot. I don't use Zoom that much, so it's a little little different. I think it's work. Let me try to, I'm using a PDF here, so it doesn't let me zoom the way I want to. So here's the site for anyone who needs to see it or wants to see it. Just to give you, just to orient you a little bit, Dunes Drive is over here, north is is facing up. Where my hand cursor is circling is the existing building, the existing parking lot. And then these perfectly square buildings here are the four proposed buildings. We have the drive off of Gloschewski with parking and then a secondary parking lot here. This building that I'm circling here is is the phase one building. And and I'll also point out in this corner is the is the detention pond. Although after the first presentation, I'm looking at that under underground storage maybe as a better option. It's over here. Have to talk to the city about that, so.
You got a lot of sand there that can filtrate.
Right, right. I don't even make it to the the city system except for a large event. So here, here's the site plan. I don't, I can, I can just click through the plans if you want me to.
Up to the commission, what would you like?
Yeah, if we could do it quickly.
I'll do it quickly because my neck is a stiff because yours. So the, you know, the details on the building, they're hundred by hundred, ten foot wall height. You know, the building's not designed yet. I would imagine, you know, I know that Ryan said the building may be thirty foot tall. I don't know if that's to the the gable peak or if that's the wall height, but we had talked about a ten foot building wall height. And then the, you know, the roof structure on top of that. Where we're tying in utilities either to the to the north or over on on Gloschewski Drive. Here's our landscape plan, which was also shown on the site plan, but I'll zoom in again. There's a very heavy tree buffer to the west and to the south. And again, that that berm stays intact over here. When you do a sideline study, the the closest house to this building is four hundred and fifty eight feet away from that wall. And so from a six foot height, if if you're just standing in this, in the front yard, looking over that berm and the trees and the few trees on the berm, your your sight line takes you about twenty feet off the ground, so anything below twenty feet, you won't even see. And again, that's at the closest house and which is almost almost straight across from from this first building here. I would venture to say that once these buildings are constructed, they won't even see them at all. So here's the phasing plan. Zoom in a little bit. There's, there's the phase one with the parking, the detention pond, building A. And then phase two is building B with a secondary parking. And then these two buildings are are building C and D or that are in phase three. And of course, Ryan talked about, you know, the funding of this and, you know, how they want to get their operation up and off the ground and and use the proceeds to start building new. This is just the preliminary. I'm sorry.
What's the estimated timeframe on all the buildings to be completed?
Well, what we're submitting in our application is the phase one begins in twenty one, phase two in twenty twenty two. Phase three in twenty twenty four. Over to the grading plan, just, you know, preliminary plan showing the parking lots are going to drain to storm sewer system. It's going to take the water to this pond. And then an outlet into the city storm sewer along Gloschewski Drive with, you know, restricted outflow. Of course, we're going to abide by all the local soil erosion regulations and standards and then just have a couple of details here showing the light fixture. That's that's a fixture. There's certainly other fixtures. If that one doesn't work, excuse me, we can certainly look at others. Like I said, in the lumen plan that we did for the for the other layout, there's no light spilling over that exceeds the one foot candle standard. And again, our electrical engineer Jacob used some wall packs on some of the other other buildings on the south to to kind of face north so that there are tall light poles or trying to keep them on the buildings to illuminate the parking.
Do you have a rendering of what the buildings are going to look like?
We don't, and I don't know if Ryan does, you know, at this point in the, you know, I know we're we're looking at a pre manufactured steel building, I think is what he's considering. Ryan, you want to jump in, talk about that?
Yeah, yeah. It it would look very similar to the the existing buildings that are there in the district. So Joe is exactly right, you know, the steel sided with really neutral colors and things that that blend in well to the landscape and and the surroundings. The uniquely different, you know, ideally want to have a balance. So things aren't standing out to you on a on a grow and process are very different than from our dispensaries, you know, there's there's not signage you know, outside, we're we're not trying to, because we're not having the public, you know, go there for any reason. You know, it's employees, state inspectors, et cetera, et cetera.
If I could just add, if I could just add something to that. So I'm I'm back at the site plan now. So if you look at the buildings, again, they're square, the the access to the building is going to be from from the driveway. So so Ryan's, you know, Sprinter van or whatever little cargo van he uses are going to drive in. They're going to access from the interior of the site. Because of that, that's where the garage door will be on the on the gable ends. Everyone know what the gable end is, it's big, okay. So looking at it from the west, those neighbors, if they can see over the berm and see past the trees, they're going to see they're going to see the drip drip line on the roof, which is going to be about ten foot off the ground, which which honestly means they won't see it. They're going to see, they're going to see the peak at some point. But but with that berm in place and the ten foot wall height, they won't even see the edge of that building. At least that's that's the building that we discussed to this point, unless for some reason that changes, but.
And Joe, what, since you're kind of on that, I think we should kind of talk about real quick. We've kind of got one of the recommendations on here was, well, first of all, first, within this section eighteen eighty nine, the warehouse and public of the ordinance, kind of incorporating that into the recommendations is what we're after. So one of them is all local, federal and state laws and regulations are going to be included in this and that goes for ordinances for emissions, dust odor, smoke gas, all that. And that's all the required permits as well. But what you touched on that kind of brought me to that was the transporting of the of the materials there inside the facility, that that's something that we definitely want touched on there. I don't know if you want to jump in with anything else there, Mike?
Well, it's basically, so there just needs to be clarification. I mean, we mean, you guys talked about this, Ryan, when you submitted your plan. But the secure transport on there is pretty, it I think it falls right in line with what the state standards are. But can you touch on that a little bit and explain it to the 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 planning commission and the public here, what that secured transport would look like as well as how it's separate from the grow facility itself. It has to be completely, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, can you give them an idea of what that's going to look like? How it's completely indoors, like they're not going to, there's no guy loading up plants outside or anything crazy. Like, can you give them a little bit of background on that, please?
Yeah, yeah. So again, if if you're on the operations side, grow, processing or dispensary, you're 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 not allowed to, you know, as per state law to to be involved on the compliance or testing or the transport. So there are third parties to us that do all of our transportations. Everything is done in various size of Sprinter vans. And because you're the the thought of moving that amount of product in a single vehicle, just, you know, well, it just would never, never occur. You know, you're 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 not pushing that sort of volume out within a dispensary that that often that you need that. So so there's, yeah, they're typically transport vans that that blend in and they have their own set of laws and things that they need to abide by to ensure safe transport and security where the the state is, in in order for it to file the the federal call memo that came out a number of years ago to allow states to operate or or allow operations of legal cannabis businesses. Oops, sorry. There there's certain that that must be met. And 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 so essentially the state of Michigan, like other states, track from seed to sale. So at any point, the the state know, you know, this plant originated here. It was transported here for testing. It was transported back to the facility for processing, you know, potentially. Then it was transported to the dispensary and, you know, and and there's lots of different, you know, it was.
Can you talk about the? Can you talk about the loading and unloading zones within the thing and how they're secure and separate from the grow and any other areas? I think that's more what we're looking for within the ordinance. There's a requirement that your 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 garage up area is a secured area, you know, garage, you know, that's what I'm looking for, right?
Well, so the vehicle is entering into the the facility. Plants are not exposed to the outside air in any way, shape or form. They're they're not taken out for numerous reasons, not only security, but you know, but also contamination. And potentially, and and maybe to Mike that Josh could further address. I don't know if Josh is still on the line, the attorney or something, but you can further address your questions.
Yeah, I I'm still here. The the transporting quite often will, you know, occur inside, and that's what the plans show is that the transport would take place inside and in the Sally port of sorts, where they would be loading up the van. One of the important things to know about the secured transport is that the secured transport company is required to have two employees take part in the secured transport process, and the employees aren't allowed to have access to the product once it's been loaded. And then they transport it then to either the processing center or the dispensary where the person that has or the company that has purchased it would then have access to the product upon destination.
Zach, can you read off the the secure transport section where it requires the the separation and completely secured area? And just and just let them know about that if they're if they're not, if this is not what they anticipated, because it's a requirement of the zoning ordinance, and we just wanted to touch on that because we will we will request that it's a stipulation. And I just want to make you make you aware of it, so.
What I'm envisioning what they're doing for their loading and transport is like the Sally port at the county jail where you bring prisoners in. The inside doors are locked, they bring the vehicle in, lock the outside door, open the inside door.
Yeah, that's exactly what the the ordinance is calling for. I just want to, you know, wanted to be clear. So so, you know, there is a secure area where these transports are required to take place and they have to be separated from from the the rest of the area per the zoning ordinance. And I think that's state law as well. So it it's pretty much mirroring it. But I I want, I know there was some concern about security as far as that goes. So we just wanted to address that.
While we're on security, that's that's another recommendation from the site plan review committee. I know the police department really wanted to see surveillance cameras across the whole facility inside and out. I don't know if that's something you guys had anticipated. It's something you planned on, but that's something that they were hoping to see.
Yeah, that the the state requires that of us of any facility and 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 within, you know, our dispensary, there's not any rooms that cannabis is in within the dispensary and the the same going for growing processor is you have to have a camera angle and 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 so we have in our, well, in our facilities and the the one I'm sitting in, there's there's over thirty cameras. And there isn't an angle whether whether inside of the facility or outside of the facility that that is covered. And the only reason you don't see the dress gear is typically addressed in that next phase as we start to show the the interior and how everything is addressed. But the the state, that's a mandate of our final inspections. We spend a lot of time and hours working within our security consultants and the state to make sure every angle and, you know, and your facial recognition in certain parts of the the facility. You know, the these are probably more secure than you know, a lot of banks or or federal institutions and it's it is pretty impressive.
I guess Zach, while we're doing recommendations, did we have any other ones?
Yep, I can I can keep going down the the list here from the site plan review.
Mark, is that all right?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so fire department, the fire department wants to require signatures on any FDC connections. And they want to see them on the site plan as well and install them if they're not present. They also want to see an additional additional fire hydrant installed near the south entrance to be completed with a second phase. There there were some current concerns about the the span of how far their truck could reach there. It was it was really toe in the line. So they said that that second phase, when that building goes in, they'd really like to see another hydrant installed there. Verify utility lines with Aztec prior to construction. DBW's he's he had some knowledge that they they might have more information for you guys that it would be worth looking into and.
Yeah, he was concerned about the sour gas lines in on the the southwest side of the parcel. And they want you to just verify before construction begins that you guys know their location.
Fire department also want to remind you that they're going to be doing PPE inspections as well. I'm sure I don't know if that's part of the state requirements, but.
They also said they you guys should provide the PPE for them to do the inspections as well. So that the city's not working that out, so.
Knox box for the fire department, if it's not a twenty four hour operation. So that's something with, I'm sure they're going to want the master keys and everything with that project as well. And then another comment or concern that came up during the meeting was if fertilizers are used and stored on the site, they need to be clearly marked. So I I'm going to assume that's going to go ahead and go with your waste material as well. If there's if there's waste material that's going to be leaving the site, that's going to, you're storing it for any sort of time.
Correct, yeah. And those are those interior design next phase that will be laid out as well.
So one last note we've got here is an engineer to can to confirm order control is able to eliminate noxious odors and, you know, noxious is kind of just otherwise negative odors from a that a regional person might understand as.
You've kind of touched on that a lot, Ryan. We just need somebody, the expertise isn't within the city to determine that. So an outside engineer would need to sign off on that, saying like, you know, the the you know, no noxious or, you know, odor is escaping, you know, the building that might be considered a noxious odor.
And again, too, right, that that that's really getting addressed in that that next.
Right, we understand that and, you know.
For everybody to know that that's part of the the process.
Right, exactly, so.
That's what I had as far as comments and recommendations.
All right, thank you, Zach. I did, you know, this is a long meeting, so I just have another another question. The dumpsters that you're going to be using using on site for waste, are they going to be locked?
So this is, and yeah, maybe something where where Josh steps in, or maybe we both don't know because we haven't looked into it. But 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 typically those are secured in in a separate manner. They they are for our dispensary. They're secured in in such a way that, you know, that follows the the ordinances that are that are set in place.
And any, once you start building these buildings, would you be reaching out to local labor?
Yeah, yeah. And and we've utilized, obviously, from from planning to, you know, everything with our meds cafe facility going in. I wish I had the exact number, but the significant amount of those contracts are locally sourced. The same in each of the communities we operate in because we tend to cut cost savings and 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 maybe the issue was brought up earlier in the meeting, too. And and there are some difficult issues with with bringing teams in from outside of the area, you know, to try to handle these sort of projects. And and we've already engaged local contractors. I don't I don't know how excited they are for me to say who those guys are. But, yeah, our general contractor is currently does a significant amount of businesses on some some projects within the the city that are going on right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions by the commissioners? None?
I'm satisfied.
Mike or Zach?
I'm all set. I I do have one, and I I just realized when you said the 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 dumpster, and I apologize. But if if any recommendations made, we would just like to see it. You know, shown on the site plan, they have parking area that can easily adequately take it on the west side there. But I did not, and maybe I'm missing it, and maybe I'm just tired, but.
I don't see it either.
So if you guys could, if we if you guys make a motion to accept or move forward with this, then we'd like to internally be able to approve that location of that dumpster corral there with the fencing that's required by the zoning ordinance. So and and that's, you know, I don't see it. So I'm, you know.
That number thirteen.
I've got a, I've got a single stall dumpster on the west side.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was there, but I I just assumed it was going to be a lot larger, but again, the buildings are so big, it makes it. So, yeah, if you have it there, I apologize. I'm tired. And I was like, you know, maybe I'm missing it, but no, okay. Yep, we're good then.
I would also, I would also assume, and maybe Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's there's the everyday trash, and then there's the waste you were referring to earlier that gets like trucked off site. Is that is that some sort of a waste system that's located inside each building where it goes into some kind of container and then hauled away or?
Yeah, yeah, that 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 the waste you're referring, you know, not the the typical waste, but but anything off of the the grow and the plants, that's all.
Inside. Probably specialized waste that gets hauled a special way.
Yeah, yeah. And secure transport comes in to take that, so that's really leaving the the facility. So, yeah. Yeah, and so there's not actually, you know, you know, much trash that that's created, that's, you know, would be dissimilar to any other business in the in the district. You know, with.
Right.
Yeah.
One last thing is just with that green space buffer, if 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 something, there's just a section number on it. And that recommendation, we just note by section number. And Zach, do you know what section number is off the top of your head? I think you have it.
Five thirty one.
Okay, thank you. So we we just asked that the 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 green space buffer on the west side through the property line in the south side meets those requirements.
All right, Zach, I'm assuming all those requirements are going to be sent to us, whether to email or.
Yeah, 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 you'll get them. No, no problem. I just if they move forward with approval, you know, then yes, you guys will get them, and then we'll we'll want to see it, you know, as a memo and stipulations and such. But that's all we had.
Thank you. We'll close that and move to the next public hearing on text amendments.
One second here, guys. All right, I'm going back to this. Zach, do you have those up by any chance, or do you want me to pull them up?
I've got them up right here.
Okay, you'll just share your screen. We can, we can run through this real quick. And then this one should be pretty quick because these are the text amendments we've been talking about for over a year. So
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zach, we scroll down and do you have them broken up individually? So they're just.
Yep.
Yeah, let's do it that way. And we'll just go right through them real quick. So this is the lower story dwelling requirement to allow within the C three district, the lower story dwelling. Forty percent of the area has to be commercial. Defines it there. You, you can have lower below ground as well. So like the basement areas that are walkout on some of the back sides of the building. Those incorporated it. And I don't know how much time you guys want to spend on me because this, these have been in our master and on plenty of planning things, but we can.
Plus, we have copies that were sent to.
Right, so.
Well, let me ask everyone, does anybody have any questions or changes or anything on these?
I don't. I think that that this has been a a well spent effort.
Yeah, I don't have any questions or changes to be made either.
They all look pretty good.
Bob, you don't have anything?
Not right now, no, I can't.
All right, Roger?
I'm asking them to unmute. Unmute, Roger.
No, I have nothing to discuss at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Shall we?
Nope, I read through it and I'm good.
All right, for those of the public that don't know, some of these were to allow like patios within, without a land use permit, you can put them in as long as they meet the requirements that are, you know, for most walkways are three feet off your property line. Yeah, there's a site plan review committee that had to be updated for the requirement for the R C program that the city's entered in. Temporary storage structures were allowed for pods essentially. So so many days a year, you can have a pod for storage on your property, but still doesn't allow for temporary structures like tents or those garage things that people keep putting up that I have to keep talking to Josh Glass about. And then there's design standards that are, they're still, they're not very enforceful, but what they do is they just kind of lay out, you know, we would like you to, it's not we would like, you have to have your your a neighborhood conforming building within your neighborhood, and it lays out the guidelines on those. And those have been on several planning commissions over the, I I would say they've been on there for six months and every time, so. You know, that's just a quick run through what they heard available for review. And if, you know, this was a public hearing for him. So we'll see if the public's here to comment on him, so.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing.
All right.
And move on to public comments.
What everybody's waiting for. All right, guys, I am going to go in order.
We just want to run through this real quick.
Yeah, go right ahead.
That we, this public comment on agenda related items, agenda only. And you have three minutes. So please name and address, please.
Right. So and just to clarify, the Lake Shore Hotel or Hampton Hotel Inn is not on the agenda. So this is for agenda related items. There is a public comment section later on that is for non related agenda items. So we are starting with, it will be David Roback. Let's see here. I got to find him. If he's still here, let me find him real quick. There he is. I'm sorry. There you go.
Hi, this is Claire Rubek. We share, we're sharing a computer. Can you hear me?
Yes, just name and address, please. Claire Rubek and.
And I'm a property owner at three two six Dunes Drive. And I also own the berm that runs along Dunes Drive that was referenced earlier. Appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know it's late and it's been a lot of complex topics. And I want to thank the attention that's been put on the landscaping plan. And I would like to add to that, that as there have been modifications in the industrial park, that green buffering has been required of those businesses. Fablite is a good example of that fairly recently. And I think the green buffering is very important to the south side. It isn't just to the west, it's the south side and also the children's play park, I think, should be in consideration for this buffering. As the process advances for the special use permit, it's my understanding that an application with the city for a special use permit requires that the applicant hold a state marijuana license at the time of the application. And I've tried to verify that based on the party names that have been provided. The MKR, excuse me, I'm a little nervous if I'm seeing the letters wrong, but the investment properties, Ryan Fitzsimmons, Victorian reserves, and I do not see a state license issued. So I'm a little confused as to how the special use. As to how the special use permit can advance at this time. Um, but perhaps there are other entity names that we are unaware of. And that is part of what I alluded to in my correspondence at the complexity of this. And I think part of the special use permit should require some sort of ownership tree. Um, Mr. Fitzsimmons referenced partners, but we don't know who those are, and, um. I just would also like to clarify, um, a characterization, it is not such necessarily that I. Um, I'm against marijuana, but we need to make sure that the promises that are being made actually happen. And in some ways, the city ordinances will see to that, and in some ways, they will not. And that is indeed one of the roles and purposes of the special use permit is to attach these conditions. And pro- um, convert these promises to obligating conditions with the S U P. So I appreciate everybody's consideration, it's, um, a very large project involving grow and processing. Not retail and, um, fifty thousand square feet double stacked is quite massive. And I was surprised to learn tonight that this is the, um, entity's first foray into this. And I also would like to request that the S U P, when it moves forward. Um, be issued on the phases, to issue an S U P on the full project. Um, seems to give away potential protections that the city. Uh, empowers that the city has to look out for its interests, thank you.
I'm sorry, just bear with me, guys. All right, Callan Cat, I do not think she is here anymore. All right, I'm gonna move on to. I don't think Jermaine's here anymore, I'm sorry, guys, I just have to go through them.
And eight, Mike?
I'm on, I'm on, uh, five right now, I thought he was still here for sure, but maybe he left. I thought Tom was here, Tom Amor, but he might have taken off. Oh, no, he's right there. I swear to God, I saw him.
Hello, my name is Tom Amor Junior, I think my dad is here too on a phone. But I'd like to speak about the river water development and to speak in favor of the. The the project, I think it's a, a great project for kind of three reasons. Uh, first, of course, is our family owns the property that'll help us keep our sixteen employees. Uh, employed and and help us grow more to to get out. From under, to help relieve some of our debt burden. I'm a Manistee native, uh, I've lived in Manistee fifty-two of my fifty-nine years. And forty-eight of those years in the house I live in now, which is four blocks from the development. Um, I I grew up seeing my grandma walk downtown, Dave Carlson walk downtown, it's a community and it, when. You're close enough to walk, it's it's kind of a fun place to be. Uh, second point is, uh, when we hire employees, we we also bring on. Uh, young employees in their twenties and, like Mick had mentioned earlier about teachers coming to town. When when our new employees are looking for a place to stay, uh, it's been hard for them. So this will help the the workforce housing aspect of that. Um, so some of the kids I coached at soccer have lived upstairs of the downtown retail shops. And that was part of the draw to it, they could be downtown and close and and fun and restaurants and all of that. The third element is, uh, the senior housing. I'm in that demographic now and my wife and I have talked, hey, there'd be a time when we don't want to mow the lawn anymore. I've got friends, we, last year, we had our fortieth class reunion, people come up and they say, boy, it'd be great to live here and they talk about retiring here. That that's the demographic, uh, fifty-five doesn't seem as old anymore, so I'm in favor of the project. And thanks for the hard work from Kendra and Kitty and, um, Alan. And and of course, the board, you guys stay up late.
All right.
We're on overtime.
Yeah. All right, so that was five, I believe the next person is eight, so it's, uh, it's gonna be Patricia. Patricia, do you have a comment? Ask you to unmute again. Z public eight, Patricia, do you have a comment? I'll ask one final time before we move on, Z public eight, Patricia, do you have a comment? All right, we're going to move on, Z public nine, Sam and Nicholas, you are up.
The only comment I had was, um.
Can I, can I get your name and address, please?
Yeah, Sam Nicholas, three three two Dunes Drive. Uh. Is there, do, does this company have other grow facilities in Michigan or anywhere that we can verify the? The comment about no odor being, uh, leaving the facilities. And. It'd be pretty easy to verify that if there is another facility in the in the region. Because a lot of facilities, I appreciate what he says about their commitment to that, um, a lot of other folks that have. Established grow facilities certainly don't adhere to that. So it's really, I don't know if there's a possibility of getting an answer to that question, or is it just for public comment only? That's all I have.
Okay, yeah, it was, it's it's just for your public comment here right now.
Uh, all conversation has to go through the chair, so unless the chair responds.
I'll do, uh, they have a partnership. With other grow facilities. My understanding, right, Mike?
Yes, um, with the, the partnership they have, it's more of a distribution partnership. As opposed to from from speaking with them, and I'm I'm sure Ryan's still on, if you, if you would like to pose a question, but this is public comment. Um, but, you know, if the chair wants to do that, they will certainly can.
Okay, I I might, okay.
Well, are you saying that I can pose a question to Ryan, because I'd like to see wherever these partnership facilities are. If I could actually go visit them, I feel a lot more comfortable that that I could validate in my own mind that there is. And not an odor emitting from those facilities.
Well, that is a, well, it it's a partnership, um. And I I don't believe it's it's his, now Ryan could. Step in on this too, so I'll allow it.
Yeah, yeah, I can, uh, thank you, I I can dress up pretty easily, so the the partnership that I have on this structure doesn't have a current license. Because without going through an S U P, uh, in a, in a state ordinance, or the, excuse me, municipality licensing, we can't get a. A state license, um, my partnership on this, this is there, um, so there there's some similar partners. And they go across our cannabis businesses across the state, but every time you change one partner. Um, uh, within that 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 process, you seek new licensing as per the state. Uh, and then as, uh, my partners and I, and their backgrounds, that that gets pushed through not only by the municipality. Where, you know, we turn in a significant amount of documents, but in into the state, so so all that knowledge is, um. You you know, uh, or all that information is is put out there to what is publicly accessible, because obviously we, we have security, um, concerns. Uh, personally on the, on our own, so M R K and Victorian Reserves doesn't currently have a, um, a grow license. But my partners and I within cannabis, uh, and and we have partnered grows that we use as well, where where we have equity and other. Um, uh, grows and processors.
That may or may not have the same commitment that you have to not emitting odors here.
Well, without, without revealing so, uh, so much, uh, information for us, but, but I. Um, in most of the companies that I own, uh, me and just a couple other partners, um, are the majority owners. And so those, those companies all have similar structures, and I and I think probably what would be more telling and, um. For for you and 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 for the community would be an engineer coming in on that second phase of the plan to tell you that it won't be emitted. Versus, uh, me having you, uh, go to one of our partner grows even, uh, because there is limited access. Um, you know, that that the state allows and doesn't allow, um, you know, so so merely, uh, walking outside the building or or coming up into the. The parking lot, uh, you know, um, I I don't know how much that, how much information that that provides you, uh, you know, to your, your, to your concerns. I think, I think they're probably more alleviated, uh, through that next step in the process where engineers are coming in. Um, uh, and once they're looking at the interior designs to then say to the residents, otherwise, we don't get to move forward in that, that licensing process. Right, so plants will never go in if the design work in that second phase and the engineers in the city don't find that that we're dealing with that. Um, uh, the odor issue appropriately, and, uh, in in the counterpoint, there are many, um, grows within the state. That if if, uh, you didn't follow what was going on within the municipality or within the state, that there come back and there's ramifications. As far as, you know, is up to losing your licenses, uh, for for a period of time if if you don't follow, um, uh, within those standards.
And we'll have that opportunity then at that point to to talk with the engineering people, or there's some kind of presentation to this group.
Um, so I, I believe, and this is where, uh, my attorney Josh can help and and maybe even, uh, Mike can help on this. But the the second phase is we, uh, go to get those permits and licensing within the municipality, we submit a a large amount of. Uh, documents and 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 plans, and and Mike, I don't know, um.
I mean, really, without, within any special use permit, that's, that's, that's granted tonight, that's gonna be a requirement of it. He's got it, he's got to meet it already with the, with the, and and I'm not trying to take over public comment here, guys, I really don't want this to get out of hand. And it's starting to, but with any stipulation, if if it is our recommendation, because it's the board that passes these things. We recommend strongly that they get that, but in the next phase, they're gonna have to get it anyways, so, um. Realistically, we're just saying, we would like, you know, as part of this, it has to be, or they lose it and they they can't grow. So that it's it's a recommendation we are making, now the board would have to do that now, I I. I really don't want to get it out of hand, really, the interaction is supposed to go through Mark.
Well, no, I appreciate it, I appreciate you.
Okay, all right.
Hi, um. And the next person was, it's gonna be Robert, I I might mess up your name, Bone or Bow. When I ask you, uh, Z public ten, Robert Bone. Do you have a public comment?
Hi, this is Robert, uh, no, I didn't expect that today, thank you.
All right, uh. It's, it's finally Kim's turn, um, and Kim, just name and address. Uh, just don't forget to unmute, yeah, there you go.
Three three two Dunes Drive.
Your name, Kim, it didn't come through.
I'm sorry, Kim Nicholas, at three three two Dunes Drive. Um, I want to thank Ryan, first of all, for laying it all out for us and filling us in on the process. Um, I do think dispensing is a lot different than growing, um, and I don't really know if it's. You are the city that I wanted to just reiterate the word, the wording of mediating the odor. Um, if the carbon filters don't work, is there any recourse if we go by this wording of mediate? It's very kind of wide open, um, I'd rather see something where we know if the carbon filters don't work. That something else would have to come into play at that point, um, and so that would all be within the wording. Of the ordinance, um, so I just wanted to be clear with that, it is in a residential area. Um, it doesn't matter that the residential area came in, what came first, chicken or the egg, we are both sharing that air. Um, we do get offshore breezes, just like onshore breezes, so we get that east wind that just blows everything over the whole street. So, um, so, yeah, my biggest concern would probably be the wording in the ordinance about making sure that it is odor-free. Um, and one last thought, I would definitely lock your dumpster. Just saying, even the cleaning people are looking for places to dump stuff, um. And lastly, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, one of the letters earlier in the meeting, which seems hours ago now. Um, did ask for it to be tabled to February because there was only nine days rather than the required fifteen days given. So that's all I wanted to.
Mark, can I, can I comment, Mark?
Yes, please.
Uh, the requirement for the fifteen days is for a public notice to go out in the newspaper as well as the mailings. The fifteen-day notice is not for the agenda, the agenda is, uh, is. Um, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I think that's a misconception.
Yeah.
We, we put the agenda out, uh, obviously for the public when it becomes available, typically a week out, but there is, there is no, uh. Requirement for us to put that out fifteen days prior.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
All right. And then. We are on, it looks like Z public fourteen one one three. Do you have comment? If you're on a phone, it is star six to unmute yourself, I'll ask you to unmute again. Z public fourteen one one three three, do you have public comment? All right, I'd hate for you to be here the whole time and not get to say what you want, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you again, it. It is star six from a phone to unmute yourself, and, um. It is Z public fourteen one one.
Uh, am I on now?
Yeah, we can hear your name and address.
Tom Amor Senior, twelve four nine three, Hopkins Forest Drive, Bear Lake, Michigan. I just wanna say that I was born in Manistee. And have been a lifelong resident of Manistee County. I operated Amor Science for forty years on the site in question on Water Street. And I think it's a perfect site and use. Because of its proximity to downtown for senior housing in particular. Let alone other workforce housing. Uh. My mother, Pearl. May have, uh, had never drove. Except one time when she took her driver's training. And she crashed into another car, so she walked the whole of her life. And she was known as the Hat Lady in Manistee. And at one point, she lived at Horizon Point. And she walked to Olsen's, uh, to get her groceries. Because Family Fair, of course, wasn't there at that time. And she would have loved to have been this close to downtown Manistee. I also want to say, uh, my son may have referred to this, but. We're a seventy-five-year company and we've had challenges getting qualified employees. And when we get them from out of town, we had two in the last couple of years. That would have come to join our company with their family. Except they could not find suitable housing, so I think, uh, uh. Uh, local and downtown. Uh, housing. uh, housing for qualified employees of the area is really important. I own a few rentals in Manistee and I have a waiting list because there aren't any others available. I think when seniors sell their houses to move into this facility, that'll make them available for other, uh, employees or, or members of or potential members of the community. And I really think this would be a great addition to Manistee. That's all. Thank you.
All right, I'm moving on to Z public 15 Millennium Decor and Madeline. Ask you again, if you want to unmute Madeline. So just your, your name and address.
Oh, um, I don't have a comment, but thank you.
Oh, well, there you go.
I'm in favor of all of it. That's my comment. My address is through. Yeah, Second Avenue. I, I love everything during this meeting.
Uh, I think I muted Bob. I'm just trying to unmute him real quick. Sorry, Bob. There you go. All right, uh. Z public 16, Aaron Glenn. Do you have a comment? Aaron, uh, Z public 16, Aaron, Aaron, uh, Glenn, do you have a comment?
I do not.
Z public 17 Suzanne Riley, do you have a comment? Z public 17 Suzanne Riley, do you have a comment? And last time, Z public 17 Suzanne Riley, do you have a comment? All right, we'll move on. Um. Did we jump all the way to the twenties? It looks like we did. All right. Z public 20 Scott Carlson, do you have a comment?
Good evening. My name is Scott Carlson. Address is 492 Dunes Drive. Um, we are basically right across from the proposed, uh, MRK investment growth facility. And I had a list of concerns and I think, uh, listening to Ryan took care of a number of them. But I just want to give you a little perspective that hasn't been mentioned and might help the, uh, planning committee and commission commissioners to look at this. First of all, I'm a physician and I've been in, living in, uh, Manistee since 1996. Either as a full-time resident for a period of time and mostly during, uh, seasonal times. I've been a physician in the community for a year, working for Crystal Lake over on 16, uh, or South 31. And basically I want to make sure that this growth facility has no retail establishment within 60 miles from the city. My perspective from a healthcare for this community is that when I worked in this city, I took care of a lot of people with opioid dependence and they always came in with multiple drug abuse. It was either alcohol and opioids or marijuana and opioids. And you probably don't know how severe you have it in your community. I practiced for 36 years in Grand Rapids. And we saw some of it there, but when I came up to Manistee, I was astounded by the addiction that you have in your community. And you have no way right now to judge who's legally impaired or not because of marijuana. It's hard to test and with opioids, it takes a while to get those drug screens back. So make sure there's not a lot, any retail stuff going on in your community. You'll have a rehab unit here in town and I took care of a lot of those people who worked there in that facility. They were recovering addicts from opioids and they're now running counseling sessions for patients who are suffering from the same thing. They would come to me and try to get opioids for themselves, even though they were in recovery. So this is not a small problem and I don't want to see you add any more issues in this community by having a retail unit. Sorry, Robert. Hate to see you leave because you're, you're part of this. So anyways, that's my biggest thing. The air pollution thing, I understand that's taken care of. Carbon filters are fine. The light pollution, you've taken, taken care of that, listening to, uh, Joe Wright there on the, from Spicer Group. The noise pollution, that was not touched too much. Inside growth facilities have generators because they don't want to lose one pressure, one precious second of LED light to their plants. And so, uh, generators make noise. I would ask that the commission think about how you're going to come up with a decibel level that those generators have a insulated sounding booth or shed that goes over them. Water pollution, nobody mentioned having Eagle come in and take a look at this process. Eagle is the Department of Michigan Department of, of, uh, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And they are responsible for water contamination, water containment, water spills, any leaks of water into the environment so that it does not contaminate our aquifers, our water levels at Lake Michigan. And I think if they haven't done their due diligence to get Eagle coming in and assisting them and developing their retention ponds and secondary backup sec- um, secondary containment issues in case they have a leak. I don't think they have a, what they call closed uh, system of using ethanol and using the products to process the plant. Cause closed systems use distillation. This is an open system because they use evaporation and they're maybe prone to leaks that could leak under the, through the building, out onto the environment around. So.
Carlson, you have 30 seconds.
Well, all right. Um, I'm also going to just tell you that quality security system is important. And I just want to thank you guys for taking all this time to listen to all of us, but I think, uh, everybody's input is pretty good here. And I thank you, Mike, for running this. Uh, I think you've done good due diligence. And Mark, thank you for handling this situation. I really, really appreciate you looking after the residents of the community around this project.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, um, let's see here. We are on, I do not see a 22. I don't see a 23. So 24, it is Theron Ferguson. You are up. Do you have a comment?
Yes, um, I'm Theron Ferguson, 510 Fairview Avenue, Manistee. The much anticipated going on five hour, uh, wait to, to have a chance to share. Um, I was invited to this meeting because, uh, I'm a neighbor. I'm also the owner of, uh, 428 First Street, uh, which neighbors the Amor property. And, um, I think this, uh, project is awesome. I, I think, uh, the, the planning that went into it, uh, far exceeds what anyone could have imagined. I just think it's, it's, it's great. I think the design plan is, uh, brilliant. I think that, uh, you know, all the thought that was put into it was, was incredible. My property here as, is like the elephant in the room when it comes to, you know, an important question that you would normally ask is, you know, if you guys had considered the impact of surrounding properties. And obviously you, you guys have because you, you built this thing to be something that Manistee is going to love forever. I just, as I looked at the plan and looked at the retaining wall, uh, had to raise just a, a couple of questions. Looking at the aerial map, I, I see the hillside every day. Um, and I just was wondering if there was a chance we could have a conversation or consider talking more about that retaining wall. I'd feel a whole lot more comfortable if the retaining wall, uh, were to extend uh, and connect on both sides, uh, to follow the hillside. I think that might decrease the chance for liability with children playing on the hillside. And it, it may help with erosion. Um, if we've got heavy equipment, uh, moving stuff around for a year and then we get a heavy rainstorm and my building moves. I mean, I've invested everything I've got up here. Um, it's a, it's a four unit, multi-use residential, commercial. Uh, we've got an office where we manage real estate, uh, and rentals. And hopefully someday we'll rise to the occasion where we can help manage a project like this. But we got to be here and if the building slides down the hill, uh, then all bets are off. So, um, I'm wondering if we could do that. One other question I had was maybe we could talk about the retaining wall and/or have a private conversation about, um, the north part of, uh, the east 20 feet or two feet of Lot 10 and, uh, possibly the north part of, um, Lot 11, which as you can see on the aerial map, I don't know if I can share this screen real quick.
Darren, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. So it'd be foolish for me not to bring this up. I also wanted to see it, kind of an idea of what the setback was from, uh, Oak Street on that side. Not that it really matters. I'm, I'm not going to have much of a view anyways, but I'm going to enjoy watching this go up. Uh, I, I'm proud of you guys for, for putting this together and all I can say about the MRK seed to sale project is that hopefully when I'm coaching soccer, uh, my kids, I don't have to explain to the children why they smell a skunk over there. So, uh, hopefully you'll consider my request for the retaining wall. Uh, and if you have any questions or if we could talk in person, please contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me see here.
24, there's only 37.
There was 24. And now we're going to move on to 26, Michael McLaren.
Thank you, Mike McLaren, 330 Dunes Drive. Appreciate everybody's effort this evening. Uh, just like to ask again that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed in this process. Certainly I don't have all the information that, uh, the committee and the city does, but I thought I heard a statement that the, uh, group does not have a, a license to grow yet. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that the process is complete and current and that when or if it does move forward, that, uh, a means of monitoring and enforcement is, uh, devised and incorporated in that process. Thank you for everybody's efforts.
Thank you.
Sorry guys, I'm just making sure I'm not missing anybody. I got two 37s and I know which one came in before the other one, so, um, I actually renamed the one. I think I messed up, but just bear with me guys, uh, we're going to go with pro cannabis Manistee, uh, Z public 37. Do you have a comment? Z public 37 pro cannabis Manistee, do you have a comment? And I'll, I'll ask one last time before moving on. Z public 37 pro cannabis Manistee, do you have a comment? All right, we will move on to Z public 37 Kate Dolstrom. Do you have a comment?
No, I do not.
All right. And then Z public 38 Jeff Palmer, do you have a comment?
Jeff, you have a comment?
No.
No, I just asked.
All right, I'll ask again. Z public 38 Jeff Palmer, do you have a comment? All right, I, I will ask one last time.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I am, I believe that's everybody, but I want to ensure that everybody has had a chance to speak that wishes to.
So, Mike, one of the things that we do is we ask if they want, they can go into the right and raise a hand if they have not spoken and they would like to.
Right. I was just going to say that as well. So.
Oh, good.
Um, if you're not on a phone, and I think there's only one person left that is, um, and you haven't spoken, you can right click on the more and raise a hand, I believe it is. And, um, we will get to you and I will ask for that three times and then we will move on. Is anybody else who has not commented wished to comment? Anybody else who has not commented wished to comment? And finally, anybody else who has not commented wished to comment? All right.
All right. Good. Thanks, Mike. Zach, Nancy, thank you. New business, uh, livery and dairy senior housing PUD. Is with the presentation, is there a motion to approve or, uh, disapprove?
This is Mick Shemansky. I'd make a motion to approve the livery and dairy, uh, senior housing and, uh, workforce housing PUD. As discussed with the amendments that, uh, uh, Mike and Zach had made.
For the committee for the colors and.
Would, would you guys like us to read those real quick? Yeah.
Quickly.
So I can, you want me to just start from the top, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. So for the, for that development there, uh, one of the reminders on, on the, uh, site plan review committee was no work before 8:00 AM without city manager approval. Bullards across the walkway at River Street, along with the removal of the curb cut. Acknowledgement of existing parking on the site location, particularly the south parcel in the northeast corner and where vehicles currently parking there are going to park when development starts.
That's, uh, the, is that the stipulation for the parking that's there now? Cause that's not a stipulation. Don't read that.
No, that was. It was, it was a comment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no.
These are just, these are comments and requirements.
No, just read the, just read the stipulation because he's making it off of what you're reading. So.
And, and again, and with the, uh, Ballard or landscape.
Or strawberry. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then with the, read it this time with HDC giving the approval and then let them vote.
Okay. So HDC has, has approval for any external improvements on the building facade, lighting and signage.
On river.
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
And, uh, the River Street property.
On both properties is way this one.
Oh, both. Okay.
And did you say facade as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I make that motion.
We need to, we need to change the narrative as well so that it doesn't always read the senior housing.
Right.
It needs to be workforce housing.
Workforce, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it is in the narrative that they, they did apply with that has, um,
it wasn't.
Forty-nine, but I do believe it does say senior housing. So that would be a requirement as well.
Yeah, okay. It's just the paperwork I got also senior and, and I want the workforce in there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Zach, you had it, you had it written down in a motion like that, didn't you? 25 and 24?
Uh, yes.
Read it like that, please. So Nancy, again.
So for the, um, title there, it would be 25 workforce units in the, in that development and 24 senior housing units.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have to make the motion again?
No, a second.
We, we've had a motion, just, we just need a second.
I'll second it.
Second. Bam. Okay. Any discussion? None? Nancy, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semansky?
Commissioner Semenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride, she left, didn't she?
Yeah.
She gone. Commissioner Yoder?
Well, I'm Roger, my computer. If he's still there, I don't I don't see him, actually.
There.
No, I think he's, no, he's right there. There he is.
Mr. Yoder?
We gotta find him again. There he is. Roger, can you unmute?
There you go. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. It is approved. Moving on. Roger.
Hello?
Yeah, Roger, we can hear you. I'm gonna I'm gonna mute you up for the discussion portion. If you. I want to participate, start waving.
Okay.
Okay, next is the MRK investment grow operation. Is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'll make the motion to approve with with the stipulations that we discussed that. They have to be in full compliance with all the state and municipal requirements. And odor-free and meet the landscaping. Requirements that were presented by the planning office.
Okay. Is there a second?
So Mike goes standard.
Mike?
I I can't interrupt a motion, guys.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Can we check Roger?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, what's going on? There's a second on what?
We're looking, we're looking for a second.
On the growth.
On the.
The growth operation? With all the recommendations that have been stated tonight, I would second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, okay? Or we vote, can Zach, can you read the restrictions?
Yeah, I can go ahead and do that.
Okay, you may want to mute Roger.
Hey, I wanna mute me.
Okay, so for the site, the site planner review committee. FDC connections added to the site plan and installed if not present, which requires an approval from the fire department prior to construction. An additional fire hydrant installed near the south entrance to be completed with the second phase. Must comply to all fed, state and local ordinances and require all departments that go with it. A stipulation for granting this SUP is the lighting and lumen plan that goes along with the project. And then more more recommendations would be section eighteen eighty-nine, the public warehousing order. Portion of the ordinance and making sure that is adhered to. Section five thirty-one, the landscaping and screening portion of the ordinance, making sure that is adhered to.
Along what boundaries?
Along the boundaries on the on the west and the southern portions. And an engineer, an outside engineer who can firm order control is able to eliminate any noxious orders.
All right, that's it, Zach?
That's what I've got.
All right, with that. No other discussion. Nancy, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Yoder?
Raj?
Yes, I can't talk if I'm muted. There's another recommendation about no showing.
Do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear, yes. Approved, thank you. Next, text amendments, the C-three lower story dwelling. Mike, you want to do this separately or do you want to go through them all?
I, it's up to you guys if how you would like to approve them.
So that's a question to the commission. Should we group or go through each individual one?
I motioned we group. Grouping together.
Bob?
I want to make a motion, we approve the text amendments as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
That's Shelley?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder? Commissioner Yoder?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, thank you. Approved. Last but not least, courthouse bouyards.
All right, so. I'll talk about that for a second. You guys in front of you have our recommendation as well as a little background on this. Chief Glass had contacted me, the circuit court judge had asked for additional protection for. People entering and leaving the courthouse. There's been threats recently within the country. And outside this area of people potentially driving vehicles into. Municipal buildings or civic buildings within the country to help offset that. They had requested to put bouyards in front of the the parking lot side of the county building to prevent anybody from crashing through the. The the area that most people enter through. With that in mind, we considered it as part of an essential service. You guys have to. Approve that. It's it's usually used for, you know, authorized. These civics kind of uses that may or may not be allowed. Otherwise, there's a a definition here, essential services, services, utilities. Needed for the health, safety and general welfare of the community. And it lists such as underground, surface or overhead electrical, gas, telephone stream. Water, sewage and other utilities and the equipment necessary for such systems to furnish an adequate level for the city. The county courthouse is essential to the functions of both the city of Manistee and the county. The bowlers would help protect the deputies located in the foyer as well as residents of Manistee County as they end exit and enter the courthouse. It allows you through the essential services, section five twenty-seven of the ordinance, to approve this kind of thing. The reasoning essential services request is due to the county courthouse being located in the R-two land use district. And uses associated with civic structures or professional offices are either not allowed via the use table or are listed as special uses. So Manistee County is also wait requesting that you waive the land use fee associated with the land use permit. For the bouyards and the cost would be a twenty-five dollar permit to do so. Staff recommends granting the essential services and placement of the bouyards three feet from the alleyway as shown on the site plan. Your potential motions are, the planning commission moves to permit the Manistee County the use of the essential services section of the ordinance. And ways all fees associated with the permitting process. The planning commission denies the permitting Manistee County in the use of the essential services section of the ordinance. And requires Manistee County to pull all required permits and fees associated with the installation of the bouards. Or the planning commission moves to permit Manistee County the use of the essential services section of the ordinance while also putting some other regulation. Or requirement on granting this use. The fees may or may not be waived.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. So with that, is there is there a motion on A, B or C?
Make the motion for A.
Okay, motion by, motion.
Second that.
And a second by Mick?
Yes.
For A? Do I need to read that, Mike? Or do we just?
Uh, yeah, I could read it to you guys again to make your motion.
Okay.
Uh, the planning commission moves to permit Manistee County the use of the essential services section of the ordinance. And waves all fees associated with the permitting process.
Okay. With that, any discussion?
Yeah, I've been to a lot of courthouses around the state through my work and you're seeing that more and more. And it just makes sense. It's, there's too many crazy people out there. Yeah, yeah, I agree, Mike. The only, I'm I'm just curious, were were they planning on on having a. Bollards that could be removed or are these going to be permanent solid in grounds?
I believe they're going to be permanent solid in ground. They had talked about a removable bouyard. However, the area and gap that they're putting them in, well, would it let a vehicle as such as a car through? It has wheelchair access. As well as like, you know, large carts for emergency services.
Okay, well, that's why I was curious about the having the removable ones in case they needed to. To bring something in or out of the courthouse. Well, they've got plenty of access in the courthouse to bring other things. Other, other doors, so. Yeah, this is, this one is just too accessible for, this one is just too accessible for crazy people to do something on.
Yeah, you can't get in on the north side on a with a car.
No, and they can do a lot of access to there as we used to come through there.
Okay.
Yeah, probably long overdue.
None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, we'll get towards the end, so. Non-motorized trail plan and sign ordinance.
All right, for the non-motorized trail plan, we're kind of in a holding pattern. There's a countywide recreation update that's been looking at. We also have grant opportunities through the community foundation that we're we're pursuing here for grant for trail development. Now, we're working with Networks Northwest and my my predecessor, Rob Carson there. To try to get some of this stuff done, but right now we're in a holding pattern on there. We have a really good plan. You know, that we might want to look to adopt. However, I'm meeting with Rob, I believe on the fourteenth. And we're going to devise a plan with the community foundation to move this forward. So right now I don't really have an update for you. You know, I I have good news in other words, but for the countywide rec plan, it looks like Networks Northwest is. Looking to team up with us, but there are some hurdles we have on it to get that update for you guys. Luckily, nobody was really looking to apply. Within the the county as a a whole, outside of the city really, for any of that trust fund money. That was, that's through the oil and gas money, so. You know, we're we're, we're trying to get everybody, you know, with us taking on new staff, it, you know, it's very difficult for us. And our zoning contracts to develop these plans in-house, they can be quite expensive. And currently with the budgetary concerns that we're facing, we are just trying to get inventive, so you guys just got to bear with us a little bit while we try to work through it. And and devise a plan to move forward, but realistically, we're we're making positive progress now. Where if you would have talked to me about three weeks ago, I would have been, I I wouldn't have had an answer for you, so it's it's good to see it going in a positive direction. And, you know, stay tuned on that.
Thanks, Mike. And then the sign, sign ordinance?
So I approached the city about updating the sign ordinance and I don't know if I I was not clear, but. They they pushed back on it stating they would like to see. Sign updates and in areas and sign ordinances that they they feel that. Might benefit the city and and placement of these signs. The the whole thing is, is we went to them and asked them. Not not necessarily, you know, where we should redo these signs, but our question was, should we work on a sign ordinance, not necessarily. Do you want to develop a sign ordinance with us? And and frankly, you know, while zoning is covered. The reason we asked that question is so we wouldn't get into the same thing that happened with the short-term rentals. And while they they have instructed us not to develop a sign ordinance until we get more information. I I'm caught in a kind of a catch twenty-two because if I start developing it, then. I am essentially doing what I'm asking them to to tell me to do, so. It it's a, I don't know, I don't know where you would like me to go with this, guys. Would you like me to start developing and spending staff time towards. Looking at other sign ordinances and then presenting them or is this something that we need to go out and look at areas of the city and say. Hey, we really like the way that signs look in this area. We'd like to do this. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things we could do on this. The amount of staff time is going to be, anytime you take over a a sign ordinance rewrite is a. Is a monumental task because you have to meet with certain entities as well as, I I mean. It's a big rewrite, we'll just say that. And I mean, if that's something that you guys really wish to pursue. We first stop is back to city council to show them that there's a need. And it's it's difficult because. We feel there's a need, but we have to educate them before they'll give us their blessing essentially.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So it it appears that we will likely have quite a bit of construction and new business coming in. So there are no existing guidelines to?
There there are existing guidelines. Typically, we feel, and and I know there's others out there that would argue against us, but. It, we have a a side ordinance that. Could be modified to to certain areas of the city. Maybe it needs an updating. Maybe it offers two larger signs in certain areas. You know, so that's really where, you know, we were looking at. One thing is, we've gotten many comments on the monument signs that are in the marijuana district for the new marijuana places. Lots of people really like those. Are those appropriate down thirty-one all the way? Probably not, but there's certain areas that we could look to do that, but right now our sign ordinance allows them to put in pole signs, so. Uh, it it basically comes down to like. You know, educating and saying, hey, is this what you want it to look like? And then the other aspect is. You guys in the past have requested that we work with the sign makers in town and try to develop it well. They want as much freedom as they can possibly get, so it it becomes. And they wrote the last ordinance, so it's it's, you know, while there is a a good ordinance out there that is developed. And it has been mentioned by Tom many times. With, you know, the other international sign association, the APA, which is American Planning Association. Is that appropriate for area? One thing we hear over and over and over is, we really want night skies. Well, when we proposed at the time, he was like, we don't want to be. I'm sorry, I can't think of the community that we looked at. They have a night sky or dark sky ordinance, which is is. Prevents from bleeding out light sign like you see on the tobacco store, so. You know, those are the things where those would things wouldn't be allowed. But the sign makers don't necessarily want it because now you're talking less illumination. Yeah, you know, you wouldn't run into these issues where you would have a little bit more tax, so. You know, one thing that we're hearing in the community, and and again, we do not have an application for, so, you know, the project could still die as a lake shore. And the signage on there. You know, that's that's going to be, you know, what is, what meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance might not be what the community wants. And there needs to be a an an effort to, if you guys feel it's appropriate, again. That you you grant, you know, maybe some restraint on there. I mean, because it's going to be part of whatever they request, because. The size of the sign is not going to be an allowable thing. It'd only be allowable through the PUD, so. You know, it's a residential district, but the PUD allows for additional things within it, if that makes sense.
I I actually listened to that city council meeting and I was very disappointed.
And I was very disappointed with the reaction of city council about the, basically they didn't care, about the signs. And I, and I agree with Shelley, we've got a lot of stuff coming into town and we would like to have the nice signs put up. Especially along the thirty-one corridor. Because I don't want to see any more lights like the tobacco shop and stuff. I, I really don't, I want this, I, I think the sound, I'd like to see this look a little classier, you know? And I, and I know it's a lot of work for you guys, and I know you're short-staffed and everything right now, but I, I really think it's something that we need to do.
I mean, and then, I mean, the, the area that we are looking at, it's, I think it's Frankfurt, and they have, like, uh, their, their downtown areas like Cottagey. And, um, it's, it's like trendy, but that's really the size of the sign should be down there. But then we have the music, you know, play or music shop sign that's massive in. And we're like, wow, that's a good sized sign, um, you know, and then there's other signs that really don't fit into that area where, you know, that's the redevelopment that would need to take place, so we'd have to sit down with the, 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 um, the HDC and develop it, and then they're sitting down with the DDA and saying, hey, what do you guys want to see? And then, there's a lot of things that need to do, but really, um, what we are looking for and, and it might take a little politicking on your guys' end is, um, we went and asked and they said, no.
Yeah, I know.
If you want, uh, thus, us to really look at it, maybe, you know, and I don't know if Mick can apply pressure, but it can be re, re-looked at and, and just say, hey, you know, this is an issue, we would like you to look at it. Um, we would like dark skies or not illuminating sides outside of thirty-one, or, you know, not early backlit signs, or, you know, uh, you know, whatever it may be, um, whatever you guys feel, I mean, they talk about it being a resort town, but, um, a lot of our signs, you know, uh, aren't resorty, they're, they're not a small, you know, cottage industry, it's, you know, these are pole signs on commercials, sprawl, and you know, that's what you see. I mean, you, who needs a sign that's thirty feet in the air? I mean, are, do we have airplanes flying through here? I mean, it, it's, it's, a monument sign is for walkability, we constantly talk about walkability. But, part of implementation of that is implementing signs that are appropriate for the scale of what's going on, and some of that, and, um, you know, Tom and me have had discussions on, is there is an appropriate area for, uh, it, for a pole sign, and there's an appropriate area for a larger sign base, and it's usually along like, an area where you're, you, you have, uh, traffic going by at fifty-five miles an hour. Well, our traffic just doesn't go that fast through the city.
Well, they shouldn't anyways.
Right, we'll have to talk to Chief Glass about it, but.
You know, and, and again, I, I think, uh, I, I think we do have to address the signs. You know, a- again, a lot of the signs that we're discussing, you know, don't even work anymore for crying out loud. They're just poles with no, no working signs out of, uh, you know, we've got to be able to clean up our, our, our highway, so that it looks presentable and classy and, and nice. Um, I, I think we need to have a little bit of, a- again, as we do this, a little leeway where, uh, we give, uh, grandfather and, and give some time for people with, with different types of signs. Um, the opportunity to, uh, adapt, and then also, you know, some of the locations, uh, we're going to have to be somewhat adaptive because, there isn't enough room for a monument, especially when you're talking about thirty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can get nicer looking pole signs on what's out there.
And, and again, we can limit, we can limit the, what we're looking at, if you're not going to do a monument sign, here's what you're limited to.
Right, and you could limit materials as well. I mean, there's a lot you guys can do there. Um, one thing though, that before we look at anything like of that scale, is you have to look through the master plan and see if it supports it. And if it doesn't support it, then we, we, we cannot develop a sign ordinance. Um, so, I'll break open the master plan and see what it looks like, see if it, it supports a rewrite. Um, if not, uh, when we do the update, maybe we, we add that in there. And, and sit there and say, hey, but really we need, there's other things we have to do before we do that, like, does the public support, a sign ordinance update? So, there's a little bit of stuff we have to do, um, and that would be also like, you know, I mean, if, I think if you went down Arthur Street and you said, hey, what do you guys think of this sign here on Dunes, for Dunes, uh, what's it called? It's, uh, Dune Grass. You like Dune Grass? You like Authentic Twenty-One? Do you like, or do you like the specialty glass shop? You know, like?
Right, so, yeah.
I mean. And Mike kind of alluded to it too, and, and this, this might be a, a leveraging point, but when, when your sign is smaller, that's, that's a, speed control measure for one, when it's smaller, you're thinking, okay, I need to be slower, I need to read that. But also, as you're going slower through downtown, your, your eyes are on the businesses and that, and that's.
The noticing part.
Yeah.
Now, our River Street, don't we already have specific sign ordinances for all of River Street?
You have, you have River Street regulations that are built in there, but at the same token, it's for a C three district. So, it applies outside of River Street, so you guys could, you could, you could enforce a more of a standard than what you are. But at the same point, you guys still require on most of River Street is, uh, coming in with, uh, they have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the HDC. So, they, they have to say this sign's appropriate historically, but the C three district is larger than River Street. It's actually, um, it goes down to the Dairy Queen area, if you're coming up by, um, God, what's that road that Dairy Queen's on? It's that whole district up to.
Well, First, First and Green Bush.
Right, it's that whole area. I mean, if you really look at the zoning map behind, you can see it behind Zach. The C three district is that brown area, it's, it's massive.
And it goes all the way down, uh, Washington as well, down.
Yeah, it goes to the old bakery, that Northside Bakery, that's no longer a bakery, but. I would love to see that building redevelop, but that, it, you know, maybe one day, but, um, that, that whole area has those same regulations though, so, when you, when you apply something to that, just like we did with, um, you know, the, and it still has to be approved, any amendment we pass for the zoning, or it still has to go to city council. Um, the, those amendments still have to, uh, you know, like the C three district, we're like, hey, commercial in the first forty percent or forty percent has to be commercial. That still applies to that whole district, it's a whole C three district that that applies to. So, you can have livable space in there, but it's really getting rid of non-conformities too, and we've already seen people, with the rental inspection program not being what it was in the past or what it should have been, we were seeing houses that were changing over to rental units without notification. So, they made modifications to, to the buildings. They should have been held to a standard of parking and everything else through land use and a special use permit, and they weren't applied because, nobody was doing any inspections.
Yeah.
Well, and hopefully we're going to be able to catch and adjust and, and, uh, make some amendments to that. In the near, very near future.
I'm going to mute Roger, I think he wants to say something, but I don't know. There he goes.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with what you were saying, Mike. No, I didn't want to say anything, you know, special, but, it totally, I totally agree with you. But I think we talked enough about science for tonight, haven't we?
Yeah, I agree. You, you get me fired up, guys, I tell you.
Just as yet to come, Mike, so.
Alright, so, uh, I don't have anything more to say about that. As far as going forward, let us look at the master plan and see what it says in there. I'll bring that to our next order, or our next meeting, if, if it says, um, yeah, we're good to go, or they recommend a, a rewrite, we'll go from there. If not, we have stuff on our end to do, so.
Very good. Okay. Any public comments, communication?
Alright, guys, I'm going to have to go through this again, let's, hold, hold on here. Alright. David Rubek, do you have a public comment?
You have, you have three minutes, up to three minutes, name and address, please.
No public comment, thank you.
Alright, uh, Robert Bone, do you have a public comment?
No, but thank you for asking again. Good job tonight.
Thank you.
Kim, do you have a public comment? Oh, you're muted.
No, I don't, but it, it is kind of exciting to think of new signs coming in, so.
Agreed.
Alright, Suzanne Riley, do you have a public comment? I, I think she probably fell asleep on us a while. Suzanne Riley, do you have a public comment? And finally, Suzanne Riley, do you have a public comment? Alright, before I, uh, I, I let everybody go tonight, or, you know, for the public comment section, is there anybody that wants to raise their hand for public comment? I'm going to ask three times, and then I'm going to close it, I guess, or let Mark do whatever he does, so. Um, does anybody have public comment? Does anybody have public comment?
I do. I'd just like to say hello to Nancy and stay awake back there, girl.
Alright, and finally, does anybody have public comment? Oh, okay, alright, Mark, it's back to you.
Alright, very good, staff reports, anything?
Uh,
Say no.
Trying to think if there's really anything that I really need to say. We still do not have an application, so if you guys are getting comments from people, um, direct them to us for the lake shore. Again, we do not have an application, so, that can very easily die before it gets to you, um, and this, you know, again, we, while there's been talk obviously about it, we don't have an application in, as far as we're concerned, um, until we do, there is no project. Um, again, also, for the gateway project, we again, do not have an application in, so, um, we are anticipating some shortly, however, at this time, we do not have any for either of those projects.
Zach, you have anything?
Zach, do you got anything?
I didn't know if you'd mentioned Katie coming on board or not.
Oh, yeah, you can mention that, go ahead. Why, wait, Zach, why don't you introduce yourself? I'm sorry, man, that was rude of me.
Well, it was a long meeting, we, you know, priorities. Uh, yeah, I'm Zach, I'm, I came over here from Genesee County, I was a planner there for, two years and I came out of grad school from Michigan State. Um, started here a month ago now, and it's been non-stop, so I'm excited to be here. And I,
That's a bad.
I'm also from Genesee County, I've got, I've got, uh, Katie I used to work with over there, I convinced her to come on board over here, so, bringing more staff.
Good, well, welcome, Zach, and.
Yeah.
Welcome, okay. That it, Mike?
That's all I have for you guys.
Member discussion, we'll run through real quick. Uh, Bob?
Welcome, Zach, uh, you're going to find out we're a bunch of crazy people, good luck working with Mike. And it's been a long progressive night, and hopefully the next one will go a little smoother.
Nick?
Yep, uh, Happy New Year, everyone, and, uh, welcome to, uh, our, uh, community and, uh, hope to see you sometime in the future.
When we can see people.
Yep.
Shelley?
Oh, yeah, welcome to Zach and then Katie as she comes in. Happy New Year, everybody, I have nothing else.
Sammy?
Uh, yeah, welcome to Zach and Katie and, um, Happy New Year, everybody, and I think we set a record tonight for length of time.
Oh, yeah, now we did.
Yeah.
We went into the next year.
Roger?
Who's Katie?
A planner that starts on January twenty-fifth, uh, she was also a Genesee County planner. And I, we stole her from there too, and then, uh.
She's going to be working with you guys?
Yep. She's primarily going to be working, obviously, in staff, but she'll be handling the townships more than the city. Zach will be handling mostly the city.
Alright, thank you, and you did a good job, Mark.
Hey, thanks. Alright, with that said, I just want to thank the audience, everybody that participated tonight, it, it was a marathon. Uh, beyond, so thank you for your comments and. Uh, Mike, Zach, and Nancy, thank you for your time. And each commissioner, thank you for staying, and with that, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I think it's unanimous.
Now, let's stay on for another hour. Alright, good night.
Good night.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning.
Yeah, good morning.
Yeah, that's true.